Good afternoon, everyone. The Sacramento City Council will please come to order. Would the clerk please call the roll to establish a form?
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
She's here.
Thank you. Councilmember Warren.
Here.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Here.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Member Shenier.
Here.
Member Gata.
Here.
Member Jennings.
I am president, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Carr.
Here.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Here. Would all, everyone please rise and ask Councilmember Jennings, please lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
It is my pleasure, sir. Fledge allegiance to the flag. Of the United States of America. To the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Good afternoon to everyone. Let us get right into the agenda as we do have a lengthy agenda tonight. We've got five public hearings. I would begin though with item four, which I have talked to several council members about. And we would like to, we would like to continue this item. Not to a date certain, although I indicated publicly we'd like to reset this in several weeks. We have some more work to do with the respective stakeholders on all sides to make sure that we get this very, very important policy right. And so I know Councilmember Hanson, you wanted to make a motion to continue, please?
Yeah, Madam City Attorney, do we need, even if we have to change it later at date certain, or should we withdraw it for now? Since it's an ordinance?
Yeah, I think that was a discussion as to withdraw it for now and then we will reset it.
Okay, so, so I think it just withdrawn at the, the city manager and mayor's request.
Okay, withdrawn is fine, but I don't want that to imply that it's not coming back because it is.
I can do a motion to continue, Mayor, if that would?
No, it doesn't matter what the form is, I just, as long as the intent is clear. So with the withdrawal for now is fine.
Okay.
Okay, is there a second on that?
I don't think we need a motion, Mayor.
We don't need a motion, it's just withdrawn, is that right? Okay, that is withdrawn for now. Let's go back then through the public hearings and let's begin with item one on the North Natomas Drainage Community Facilities District. Who's presenting on this? And Councilmember Ashby, do we need a full report on this one?
It's, it should just be like about an hour or so long report, Mayor. That's okay with you, right? On the extensive North Natomas Drainage System. We made charts and graphs and it's very important for all of you to understand it thoroughly. I think we can move this one and close the public hearing so long as there are no callers for this riveting topic and that move, move the item forward, Mayor.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, is there public testimony?
There's no public testimony on this item.
Okay.
That's shocking.
Staff need to put anything on the record, just for the record sake? If not, let us call the roll then, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
After that detailed briefing, aye.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye, let the drainage begin. That passes nine to nothing. All right, we move to item two. Who's presenting on item two, please? This is historic registry?
Yes, Mayor Sean DeCoursey here with the Community Development Department.
How are you, Mr. DeCoursey?
Good. And I am pleased, I am pleased to present the landmark nomination for 3135 D Street, the Guisto family residence. The property was built in 1983 by John A. Guisto and serves as a monument to the rich agricultural history of Sacramento. The Guisto family were important farmers and one of the first families to introduce asparagus farming to the Sacramento Valley during the 1850s. Staff is recommending the property is eligible for listing on the Sacramento Register for its association with the transition of East Sacramento from farmland into a streetcar suburb, for its association with John A. Guisto, an important local farmer, and for embodying the distinctive characteristics of the Queen Anne architectural style. The property owner support the nomination and a letter of support for the nomination has been received from Preservation Sacramento. No opposition to the nomination has been received by staff. This concludes our presentation. I'm available for any questions you might have.
Mayor, I'd be happy to open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Great.
Good nomination.
I have one que-
Councilman Carr, you have a question? Go ahead, sir.
When we review these, do we look at the character and the background of the individuals who are, we are nominating for this? In other words, are any of these people like slaveholders? Or have they done things in their past that would make us come back later on and rename this thing or?
We do extensive background research. If any evidence to that effect came up or anything negative came up, we would definitely take that into consideration. Nothing came up during the research of this property along those lines or other negative aspects.
Good to know you're looking at that.
But that's not to say that it doesn't exist. History is messy.
Okay.
I'd like to, I'd like to second the, the motion, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Jennings. It's been moved and seconded. If there's no public testament and no further comments, let's call the roll, please.
Yeah, for the record, there was no public comment. Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. Thank you. Let's move on to item three, which is another very important historic, historic designation. Go ahead.
All right, thank you, Mayor, and members of the City Council. Again, Sean DeCoursey, Associate Preservation Planner. I'm pleased to present the nomination of 1810 S Street, Nathaniel Colley and Associates Law Offices for listing on the Sacramento Register as a local landmark. This relatively modest office building at 1810 S Street holds important historic and architectural significance as a noteworthy expression of ethnic cultural heritage in Sacramento. Preservation Commission recommended the property is eligible for listing on the Sacramento Register for its association with Nathaniel Colley, the city's first African-American attorney to practice law in Sacramento. Colley embarked on a prominent and respected legal career and fought to end racial segregation in housing, politics, and the workplace for African-Americans and all people of color. The building is also significant for its design by James C. Dodd, the first licensed African-American architect in Sacramento and the designer of important buildings, including the Shiloh Baptist Church. Staff has received support for the nomination from the property owner, Preservation Sacramento, Sacramento Modern, and the Central Valley Chapter of the American Institute of Architects. Staff recommends the City Council pass an ordinance listing the property on the Sacramento Register as a city landmark. And this concludes our presentation. We're available to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Well, thank you very much. Is there public testimony on this item, Madam Clerk?
I have no public testimony on this item.
No? Go ahead.
Like to open and close the public hearing and move?
Larry, 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 I'm punched up because it's my district and I would just like to-
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor.
Right, yes, go ahead, Steve.
Thank you. This is an important landmark. As you'll remember, in September, we had a big hearing about the Marina Vista Alder Grove sites, but particularly Alder Grove and Mr. Colley's very important role there at advancing desegregation in our public housing. Sean, I know his residence, which is in Land Park, also in District Four, will be coming forward for a landmark. When, when is that scheduled?
We're still working with the property owners to answer some questions about the, about the landmark listing. So we have not scheduled that for the director hearing, which is the first of three hearings for that nomination. But we're hoping to bring it forward early next year.
Okay, great. And then during that West Broadway Specific Plan Council meeting, as part of my motion, I had requested the staff begin to work adding Alder Grove and the Historic District to our Sacramento Regis- Register. Can you update us on where that is?
Yes, we're in the process of putting together the required documentation, some of the background research, maps, and other graphics. And once we have that together, we'll be doing the appropriate outreach that we always do. And in the case of a Historic District such as this, there are many stakeholders as opposed to a single property. So we're just starting that outreach now.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Thank you for your hard work. Thank you for doing this. I'll open and close the public hearing and make a motion to pass the item.
Good, is there a second? Second?
Second.
I mean, I just, my only thing is, I just hope that there's a, more public opportunities for more Sacramentoans to learn the life story of Nathaniel Colley and what he did as a civil rights hero in our city, statewide and nationally. It's really an important and inspiring story, especially in these times. Let's call the roll.
Thank you. Can we reiterate, will you reiterate who made the second motion?
I believe it was Councilmember Garrett narrowly beat Mayor Steinberg.
Just now.
Yes, I, I, I cede the second to Ms. Garrett.
Thank you. And there is no public comment on this item. Council, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Enthusiastically, yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Absolutely, yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Yes. Very good. That's, that's, that is really good, really good and great. Okay, we, we have withdrawn temporarily item four. So let's go right now to item five. Ms. Dozier?
Go ahead, Selia. Good afternoon, afternoon, evening. Selia Ineges with Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, Program Manager for the Federal Programs Division. Tonight, I'm here to present the 2021 Action Plan. And so I'm going to start with a brief presentation. So just as an overview, the federal programs, including CDBG, are guided by the Consolidated Plan, which identifies fair acts, identifies issues regarding fair housing issues. Also establishes fair housing goals and objectives. The plan also identifies our broader affordable housing and community development priorities and aligns those with the various funding sources that we have, including Community Development Block Grant, Home Partnership, which is for affordable housing, the Emergency Solutions Grant, and the Housing Opportunities for Persons with AIDS. So we align all these in order, all these funding sources to achieve goals identified for affordable housing and community development throughout the city. We developed this plan through community outreach as well as consultation with our public agencies and various departments within the city. This is done every five years and that was recently completed and adopted by the City Council in last year. And the plan goes from 2020 through 2024. And then on an annual basis, we bring forth the Action Plan for Approval, which allocates funding to activities and programs using those various funding sources. So I'm just going to do a high level, identify a couple of high level projects that were completed or will be completed this year and as well as some of our program outcomes, and then talk about the activities for 2021. So we've got two really different projects. The first one is the Meadowview Complete Streets. That starts about 24th Street, right near the Pennell Community Center, to the end is Detroit Boulevard. And it is the installation of a complete street. We all know this is a pretty busy segment. And this will provide wider sidewalks as well as bike lanes. This is under construction now. Originally, it was going to be done in one, or two different phases, but it's all caught up and they're hopefully going to complete it by the end of this year. So we're very, very pleased. I'd also like to point out, generally where the gentleman is standing is one of, a couple of different affordable housing developments that are there. Just a little further from him is the existing Via Hardin property, which is about 40 units of affordable housing. And adjacent to it is a vacant property that the Housing Authority owns. And so we will, together, it will be renovating that property and building new affordable housing. So we're very pleased that we can provide, help the city with matching funds to federal grant to improve the street for the existing residents and the future residents. As I mentioned, the Consolidated Plan aligns goals and objectives. And so here's a case where we provide funding for a community development project to support affordable housing. And of course, we have, across the street is the Meadowview Spring Structure as well as the Community Center. So a variety of things that this complete street project will support. On the other side is the Stanford Settlement located in the North Gate area. And we are providing some funding to renovate one of their buildings in the historic nature. And so it's taken a little bit longer, but it's really important to make sure that these buildings are renovated appropriately as well as meet the needs of the community. So this one will also be completed by the end of the year. So as you can tell, we do both, we support both community development and infrastructure projects. We always provide ongoing funding for our public service activities. And we call them our Safety Net Programs, which in this, this year is even more important. So we provide funding to Meals on Wheels. This is a, this, we also provide funding as part of the county as well as other jurisdictions. So this is a real joint effort to provide meals to the region. We also provide assistance through our Emergency Solutions Grant as well as CDBG for homeless emergency shelters as well as rapid, rapid rehousing assistance. And we also provide some funding for home repairs or minor repairs for a low-income person or a senior that needs a roof repaired or a window repaired, small but very important things. And then we also work with Rebuilding Together to provide some minor safety improvements. So it could be grab bars or other accessible things for the, for the home, sorry. And we also provide shelter bed nights in our facilities throughout the city. So for 2021, we have a lot of projects going on. We work very carefully with the city staff, both Parks and Public Works and Economic and Innovations to come up with these variety of projects. So you can see we're proposing to do a lot in the area of parks. As we know, unfortunately, within these, in the neighborhoods, there is very little new development. And that's where the Parks Department funds are generated to improve existing or to build new. So CDBG is just critical to doing, improving and renovating parks in the, in the, in our CDBG eligible areas. We also are doing, helping with a Del Paso Boulevard Road Diet as well as Franklin Boulevard Complete Streets. Unfortunately, this year, we weren't able to fund a project in District Six. One of the issue, one of the requirements is matching funds from the Associated Department. And so Public Works at this point has some very limited local funds, which is the match that they need. And so we weren't able to do one this year, although SIM, the SIM light signals are going to complete this year. So we're very happy about that in District Six. But we will work diligently with the Council Office and as well as the different departments to get a project in 2022. Other things, we're going to continue on with our other service projects, public service projects, including Meals on Wheels and Shelter and housing opportunities for people, persons with AIDS. And of course, our ongoing fair housing activities, which are critical, providing funds to the Renters' Helpline and to legal services, especially in this pandemic year. So that's the end of my presentation. I'm available for any questions you may have.
Very good. Thank you very much, Selia. Is there any public testimony on this item?
I have no callers on item five.
Okay, are there questions from members of the City Council?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
I'd just say that I really appreciate the investment in Stanford Settlement. You know, I'm a huge proponent of that particular organization and the building. Actually, Mayor, you and I toured that together.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, long time.
Yeah.
Way, great space and to bring it back to life is a wonderful thing for the North Gate community. So thanks to SHRA. And I'll open and close the public hearing and move the item.
Very good. That's been moved. Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor. LaShelle, I think you and Selia and the whole team have done a really good job on this. Recently, we did have some pretty significant incidents at Marina Vista and Alder Grove related to a shooting in the last week and a half and another one not long before that. My staff had reached out to see if improvements requested by the residents a couple of years ago related to cameras would be CDBG eligible. I don't think we heard back in time for the hearing today, but could you address that quickly if you know the answer?
Certainly. So as you, as we all know, CDBG has a variety of strings attached. And so investment into, into housing, into affordable housing has to be part of an overall renovation. So if there, at the time when the Marina Vista Alder Grove is renovated, security improvements can be part of that and can be paid for by CDBG. But a standalone installation of security cameras is not one that would be eligible by itself.
So one of the, one of the things, though, that we do want to take a look at is the additional lighting and trying to find another funding source to help with that particular situation. We have been able to use some solar type lights that are much more affordable than what we looked at a few years ago, that are working out really well in some of the other properties. So we want to really take another look and see if that is at least an opportunity to, you know, to lighten up the area.
I appreciate that. And LaShelle, with you and Howard, I think we'll probably have to revisit that, but not on this item, the security issues. But I'm happy to second the motion and thank you for all the good work you're doing with the limited resources that you have.
You're welcome.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Councilmember Shenier?
Aye.
Councilmember Gata?
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings?
Aye.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
Aye. All right, thank you. That ends the public hearing portion of tonight's calendar. Now move up to item six under the discussion calendar. And this is Councilmember Shenier's resolution regarding public safety and youth services. Councilmember Shenier, are you presenting on this or is staff presenting?
I'm going to start it off and then we have the folks who actually have been working on this with me for the last probably 14 to 16 months.
Very good.
All right, so thanks very much, Mayor, and thank you all. The way we're going to do this is I'm going to just lay some context out. D'Angelo Mack from Public Health Advocates is going to take up. And then Monica Ruelas and Sophia Munif, two young people who have both been working on this now for quite a while. So I, I think colleagues, we can all agree that public safety is the number one issue for us and in our responsibility to keep our neighborhoods and our communities safe. What I would suggest is that there are all kinds of ways that we can think about it and all kinds of ways that we can get to how we have a safe community where young people and their families can feel safe in their homes, safe in their communities, and safe in the city of Sacramento. What it really requires is our successful neighborhoods. And we have, as a council, really done two major strategies that are, that are just getting off the ground, I would argue, to get to that point. One is inclusive economic development, where we're really working on support for our most at-risk neighborhoods. And the second is the creation of the Office of Community Response. These are strategies, obviously, that are most affect, that would most effectively address social problems, including who should be responsible. This is another piece of the puzzle, we think, that, that takes traditional thoughts about public safety and really expands them to include prevention activities. It has to be both around programs and systemic change. We know that systemic change really results from policy change and cultural change. So what we're trying to do here is not bring forward a program for the council to take a look at, but really looking at a policy that is a strong statement by the City Council that says, when we think about safe communities, we need to think about our young people. We need to think about prevention activities. And we also know as a side issue that investing in prevention saves us money over time quite a bit. So what we have done is put together the resolution that is before you today. Again, this is another piece of the puzzle. And as we think about traditional ways of thinking about public safety and thinking about police and fire, that's how we've traditionally defined public safety. For police, it's generally the number of police per thousand residents. For fire, it's response time. Those are very important things. And what we're not trying to do here is change the way police or fire work. Or as someone called me today and said, why are you trying to defund the police? This is not about defunding the police. This is about expanding how we think about public safety, again, to include young people, to include prevention activities. We don't talk about public safety as the definition anywhere in city code. But in our budget, it is continuously referred to and again, referred back to police and fire. We've looked around the state and we've looked around the country for something similar, for some similar statement in policy or resolution made by a city council or a board of supervisors. We've found nothing in California, nothing in the United States. We've talked to a lot of folks who work in this area. And so what we did and what I've done over the last probably 16 months now is put together a draft and then brought it to our youth commission and said, what do you think about this? So that was our first step. Since then, it has been continuously refined. And D'Angelo is going to talk about the process we've used for that and who has been involved in that. We've also taken it to our Police Community Review Commission and our Measure U Community Advisory Committee, all three. And then the youth commission for a second time because it had changed over time. All of those commissions have supported this without dissent. We've also run it by Letitia Watson and our Office of Public, of Police Review and Dr. Nicole Clavo from Gang Prevention. Both are, are very supportive of doing this. We've also shared it with Chris Conlin, with the fire chief and our police chief as well because we wanted to get input from everyone along the way. Again, this is our desire and for this council to make a very strong statement to reiterate our commitment to young people. They don't have a union and they don't have labor contracts. So how do we ensure that we are continuously thinking about them and the sustainability of our community? And that's really what this is about. We think that there are a lot of folks who really want to see this happen, who have put time and effort into it and, and understand that if we don't start changing the- put time and effort into it, and, and understand that if we don't start changing the system that is causing a great deal of harm to our most vulnerable communities, and specifically our most vulnerable youth, I don't think we ever get out of this hamster wheel, where we're just putting more and more funds into intervention activities rather than getting in front of it. So with that as a context, I want to turn it over to DeAngelo, who's gonna talk about where we are and how we got to today. DeAngelo?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Shenier, and thank you, council and mayor, for taking the time to hear from us today. We're excited. We're excited about the possibilities around this resolution, a resolution that comes and begins to define what public safety is to community and youth. I just want to give a brief history of how this came about, so that you understand. So, back in July of 2019, Public Health Advocates began looking at how we began to talk about public health and public safety, and began to merge the two homes. For too long, those two entities have been separate, when we know that there are always issues that blend when it comes to public safety and public health. As we begin looking at redefining or defining even, public safety, what we noticed was, there was a very limited description around public safety here in Sacramento, and our research showed through the state as well as the nation. We soon found that this would be the first of its kind in the production of a resolution, and that lifted up community and youth voice. So, very early in, late, I should say, last year, we brought together a team, a small advisory committee made up of seven individuals from our partners that SAC Youth Forward and Sacramento Act and Public Health Advocates, and began to really create a framework around what public safety could mean to the communities that we serve. Each of these organizations have been staples, staples in the community in serving young people and making sure the most marginalized are secured and taken care of. And so, we begin this framework, and as we came up with the first draft, February, actually on Heart Day, February fourteenth, we came together in a town hall meeting with over twenty youth-supporting organizations to discuss the framework that we had created. Here, the organizations began to work and rework the resolution, carving out sections of the resolution that we had placed, and then giving us additional desires that they have heard from their actual young people and community as well. So, as we took this information back and began to craft the, the second version of this draft, we ran into a hiccup called COVID. COVID reared its head, and it slowed our process down, but the conversation continued between youth and youth advocates. And so, in July, excuse me, June, between June and August, we hosted these listening sessions with young people from across the city, and asked them key questions. Those questions were, how would you define safety? How would you describe feeling safe? What do you need to feel safe or safer? And does the resolution reflect your definition of safety? And what we received from them was some tremendous feedback, the feedback which you see in the document today. We took this, this final draft and presented it before the commissions, the youth commission, the Measure U Advisory Committee, Law and Ledge, and Police Review Commission, and from there, each of those entities agreed to adopt this resolution. I want to hand it over to Monica Merris. She's going to go ahead and share a little bit about our processes as of now, and a little more of the history.
Thank you so much, DeAngelo. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Monica Rolas Mares, and I am a community organizer with Youth Forward. We are a member of the SAC Kids First Coalition, and as DeAngelo alluded to, we have been organizing for, you know, quite some time now, and really, these past two weeks have been sort of like pushing towards the finish line up to the point of this meeting, and we've been able to organize in the past two weeks twenty-five local organizations to sign onto a letter that was all sent to you as of this morning. So, thank you to those who were able to see the letter and to respond, letting me know that they received it. So I did send that over to each council member and your chief of staff. That letter highlights the twenty-five organizations that did sign on, urging you to support this resolution. We were also able to collect five hundred and one individual signatures from citizens across Sacramento, as well as other neighboring cities, but specifically in Sacramento, we were able to collect about four hundred signatures from citizens in Sacramento. So, for the past two weeks, this has been really on the top of Sacramento citizens' minds. I think that this year in particular, you know, lends itself to the conversation of public safety. I myself am a resident of District Eight, so I met with Councilmember Carr last week. We, we had a good conversation about what public safety meant to me as I was growing up, a resident of District Eight, a resident of Metta View in particular. I think that when I was going through high school here in Sacramento, one of the things that was kind of a wake-up moment for me was that I never really thought I had a voice in local government. I never knew what I could say or ask, or who I could let know that potentially I needed more resources in school, or I didn't necessarily feel safe in my neighborhood. I never knew who I could talk to about that. And so, being in the position that I am now with Youth Forward, and being able to work with organizations like Public Health Advocates, and council members like Jay Shenier, who, who is a pioneer for youth at the city level, I think it really tells me like, wow, there are people on the council who are youth advocates. It does let youth who are currently in high school in Sacramento know that they're, they have somebody on their team, and that they always have a friend on the council as well that's gonna advocate for them. So, this moment is almost full circle for me, because my introduction to local government was actually when I was interning with Jay Shenier's office a couple of years ago, and that really allowed me to realize how much of a voice Sacramento youth could have, how much of a say we could have in local government. And I think that Sophia, who is with us today, and I don't want to take up too much more time, because I would rather hear from her, will let us know a little bit more about what youth in Sacramento, Sacramento are currently experiencing when it comes to public safety, and how they are feeling about this conversation. So, thank you for your time. I really enjoyed working with you all last week, leading up to this meeting, and I'm gonna pass it over to Sophia now.
Thank you, Monica. Everybody, my name is Sophia Munif. I'm a youth in Sacramento District Two. You would not believe the amount of time, effort, and passion that went into this entire resolution, starting with Mr. Jay Shenier, going down towards the youth you'd see in grassroots Sacramento. It's been unbelievable. We've been working on this since June with a variety of different organizations. Me personally, I've had the opportunity to interview Chief Han, Dr. Nicole Clavo, et cetera, Ms. Matsui tomorrow morning, and everybody is in support of this resolution because it does one specific thing. It recognizes the potential our youth have, and it simply gives us the ability to feel safe, because feeling safe is no longer a matter of the availability of emergency services. It's a matter of, do we have the positive outlets to express ourselves in a productive way that's gonna set us up for the future? We can both acknowledge that the language of this resolution is very important. It came from the youth themselves. I have never come across any kind of document that did that in such a way that this has. So, to me, it is such an honor and such an experience to be here, because I know I put time and energy towards this, and it's being realized. To give a little bit of background about me, I'm involved in the Children's Coalition as well as the South Sacramento CPAC, as well as other bunch of youth organizations that serve to serve youth. But this resolution is something different. This resolution is something I want to see implemented not only in Sacramento, but across cities and nations, nationwide. It's, I'm glad it's here, but honestly, it should have been here sooner. It's, it's amazing. That is it. It's just amazing, and we are in full support of it. And what I want to hear today is a unanimous vote for yes. Yes, pass this resolution, because we have faith in our kids. Yes, pass this resolution, because our teens have potential, and because our teens are the future of America, and we need to realize that, and let Sacramento be the first to do that. Thank you. This is Sophia Munif, and I think that concludes our presentation, but I'll hand it back to DeAngelo.
Thank you, Sophia.
Thank you, Sophia. Just simply amazing. As you can see, Sophia is one of the youth that participated and gave great input in what the public safety resolution should be. I'm leaving you with this. So I've been asked countless times over my career, how do we get youth to stop by, stop the violence? And my answer always remains the same: actively listen to youth. You see, those who, who have power and privilege can afford to ask the question and not actively listen for the response. For us and communities like mine, listening is an act of survival. Not listening could be, or continues to be, a matter of life and death. Heeding our words, our language, has always been a point of struggle with those who hold the power. So lastly, I leave you with these words from the great literary icon, Bill Hooks. Dare I speak to the oppressed and the oppressor in the same voice? Dare I speak to you in a language that will take us away from the boundaries of domination, a language that will not fence you in, build you, bind you, and hold you? Language is also a place of struggle. The oppressed struggle in language to read ourselves, to reunite, reconcile, to renew. Our words are without meaning. They are action, a resistance. Language is also a place of struggle. We truly support this resolution, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thank you, Monica, Sophia, DeAngelo. We're happy to answer any questions.
Well, I just want to start by thanking J. U. for your unending leadership on behalf of, of young people and trying to translate that commitment into culture change and change public policy. And the kids first, I want to thank you for your incredible work, your increasing visibility and power within the halls of power. And this is a, this is a statement of principle that will be a guiding document, not just for this city council, but for future city councils and future city leaders for many, many years to come. And if we can back this up with the resources and with the policy commitment, this will be a landmark document. So, I think this is a really big deal, and, and representative of a lot of voices out there, who you are representing as well. So, thank you.
Mayor, I don't know if we have public comments on this.
You can all put the clap on the Zoom, by the way. You can all put the, whatever you do, you know. Thank you. Yes, thank you. Do we have, Carr? Do we have public testimony on this item?
I have eight callers on this item.
We do, okay. Well, let's hear from the public then. Go ahead.
May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, this is Kumari from SAR.
Hi. What district?
District Six.
Hi.
Ah, District Four. Raymond, District Five.
Welcome to the meeting. You're in the city council meeting. Please make your comments.
Introduce for them. My comment is, I think you guys should invest into a nonprofit organization, kind of like self-awareness and recovery, that helps the youth and the community at the same time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, everybody. My name is Jonathan Ramos. I am currently a resident of District Two, where I spent the first eighteen years of my life. When I left Sacramento, that was the point at which I was incarcerated. I spent nine years on the life term in a state prison, before being vindicated by DNA evidence and subsequently released in June of this year. I worked as a staff member at Self-Awareness and Recovery, a local nonprofit organization, where we primarily serve formerly incarcerated adults and youth, and at-risk youth as well. I look back at my life and I realize how many opportunities there were for intervention. Public safety is something that is, is, is complex, but there are also points of it that we can address early on, before the problems start to appear. I realize that mentoring, youth intervention services, would have been very helpful in my situation. So I strongly support this resolution, and I, I really do believe that resource providers can act as another vital point of contact for these youth, and that they may be specially attuned to recognize the need for intervention. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Jaime. I'm also working with Self-Awareness and Recovery. We help a lot of the kids that come through here try to meet some of their, you know, simple, basic little needs that they need, right? And one of the problems that we're having right now is that, I think with the COVID quarantine, a lot of the kids are being frustrated, really having much to do. So what we're, what I suggest is, we get some resources for these kids. So, you have to understand that the DJJ is shutting down the, the California Department of the Youth Defenders, and we're gonna need a place for these guys to go, and they're gonna need some resources to help them gain their freedom. SAR will provide that, and we're asking you to support them. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good afternoon, Mayor Steinberg and community council members. My name's Daniel Silva. I'm also a SAR member and the director of the program. We're a community organization called, once again, Self-Awareness and Recovery, also known as SAR. We're calling today to encourage voters to vote yes on Proposition fifteen. Prop fifteen will bring twelve million, twelve billion dollars a year back to our communities. This funding will go directly to our children, schools, affordable housing, healthcare, community, college, and alternatives to incarceration. We would love to get a, your vote, a yes vote for Proposition fifteen. We're also working to defend criminal justice reforms, already working here in California. By voting no on Prop twenty, we make sure to reduce incarceration rates and give people who committed nonviolent crimes redemption and a second chance at life. Will you please vote no on Prop twenty? Lastly, can we keep you updated on what's happening in our community, via text or email? Thank you for your time and participation in this democratic system.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting.
Hi, good evening. My name is Goia Yang, and I'm with Mong Innovating Politics, and also a member of SAC Kids First Coalition, as well as a resident of District One. I support the redefining public safety resolution that is in front of us tonight. We, as the city of Sacramento, must prioritize youth, foster their sense of the law. We, as the City of Sacramento, must prioritize youth, foster their sense of belonging, their growth, development, and leadership, and create long-term enrichment spaces where they are celebrated. I urge you for your yes vote tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Flojean Kofar. I'm the Senior Director of Policy at Public Health Advocates. And I just want to thank Councilmember Chenier for championing this issue, as well as my colleagues, DeAngelo at Public Health Advocates, and also Monica and Sophia. This, I won't take a whole lot of time tonight, because I'm hoping that this is going to enjoy unanimous support from the members of the council. This is a really great step forward in terms of us rethinking the role that public safety plays in our community by actually making sure that we define it in all of the myriad of ways that prevention should show up in our investments, as well as the way it plays out. As the Chair of the City's Measure Youth Community Advisory Committee, our committee recommended a yes vote, and as did two other committees that this ordinance or this resolution passed through before it came to you. And so I just want to encourage all of you to vote yes tonight. I think this is a really strong show of support, we're moving in the right direction for the city and being a national leader in what can happen when we rethink public safety. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello and good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Maki, and I am from District Four. I'm calling you to urge you all to support the Public Safety Resolution. If we want to build a safer Sacramento, youth-focused prevention services. The youth are the future of Sacramento, and we need to have a proactive and preventative strategy in place instead of a reactive safety plan. Please approve this resolution to redefine public safety. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your call. Mr. Mayor, I have no more callers.
All right. Thank you very much, members of the public. Are there council members who want to make comments before we take a vote on the important resolution? Looking for the clapped hands or whatever it is, the raised hands.
Mayor, I see Eric chimed up there. I'm happy to go after him.
We've got Councilmember Getta. Go ahead, Eric.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just, again, want to thank all of the youth, DeAngelo, Monica, Sophia, and everyone who's been involved at the grassroots in developing this. Thank you, Councilmember Chenier, again, you know, for your pioneering efforts on the youth piece there. You know, I can only speak that, as DeAngelo mentioned, and some others, that I wish that there was something of this form engaging youth. When I was a teen and when I was a youth, I mean, my father was in and out of the correctional system, at the state level, at the county jail, and in the federal detention for a period. And for many of the youth, many, some of our youth, unfortunately, you know, the engagement that we have about what public safety is can be one that's destructive. And I think that this leads us, from a youth point of view, in a positive direction about what we see as public safety, what we want as public safety, and how we engage with our community. Again, you've heard it about the investments of how we can lead the way in California. The resolution outlined itself, says that we should look at data, look at outcomes, and find out what are those investment strategies that work with you by including that conversation of you. So again, I don't want to take more of your time. I think our youth spoke eloquently, and I'm just excited about this resolution, because I know that beginning the conversation as a mission, as a goal, and setting those priorities is going to be transformative in the long run. So thank you again, Councilmember Chenier, all the folks at Youth Forward, DeAngelo, Sophia, and, you know, here we go, Sacramento.
Thank you, Councilman Getta. I'm looking to see who else.
Am I okay, Mayor? Can I go?
Yes, go, go.
So just, I'll be quick as I can here. First of all, thanks, Jay. I mean, you are absolutely dogged in your efforts to continue to keep youth engaged in every form of conversation that happens at the city, and it is laudable. I'm not, oh, I'll be really honest with you, especially the young people, you know, because there's different kinds of elected officials, and you should know this. So you learn in your advocacy efforts how to sort of get us all, right? Because you want to get as many as you can. It's like Pokemon, got to catch them all, right? As many electors as possible. I'm not always a fan of resolution-type statements, because the real work happens after tonight. You've all worked quite hard to get this statement here and to, you know, bring it to our attention, but the hard part will be afterwards, turning it into action. And that's where I really like to spend my time. And I bring it up because I say this every time I get a chance. I've been on this council for 10 years. Out of those 10 years, about seven of the years, I've had a youth advisory commission. They're called the YAC, Youth Action Corps. And it is anywhere from 600 to 1,000 kids every year in high school, doing all the things that you're talking about. It's huge. It is easily the largest youth program run out of the city. It's very effective. And every time we have one of these conversations, my colleagues, the mayor, the last mayor, they all say the same thing: we should do it citywide. And it never happens. And it is simply a matter of committing money to it. Three council members got together and tried to do it, but without an allocation from the city, it's just not possible, even if it's something they want to achieve. So it's not like there isn't a recipe and a design out there of a youth program that is engaging kids with parks, police, schools, and council offices. We do lots of good things, like Jay Summitt's City Hall Program, or engaging youth on our boards and commissions, and that's helpful, too. But for a day-to-day program that is engaging kids on a regular, weekly basis in their local farmer's market, or their movie nights, or planting trees in their parks, or like tonight, being out at a trunk-or-treat with the police department, we have a working model in the city that we just have not implemented beyond District One. So Jay, I guess my challenge is really to you. Let's take your statement that you're putting forward tonight, this resolution, these guiding principles, as the mayor called them, and let's use them as a roadmap to get one of these youth programs up and running that serves kids across the whole city, so they can all have that experience. I think it makes a big difference in the lives of young people. So happy to be a partner to it, happy to support you tonight. Great work, Jay.
Thank you. Who else is up? Anybody else? Okay.
Eric Reeve, comment?
Yes, of course.
So, DeAngelo, I just want to tell you, that was a great quote, and you're a good closer.
That really was.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Can you put that on the chat or whatever, or however you do it? Can you do that?
Sure.
Or send it by email to Jay, and then Jay get it out to all of us or something, would you please?
Yes, Mayor. I could do that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's call Jay Yu. Any closing comments?
Yeah, just really quickly, I want to thank folks. I particularly want to thank Sophia and Monica. Sophia is one of the gems and jewels of this city. She is working on mental health issues for young people. She's working in a lot of different areas. She is the example of what we want our youth to be as leaders. And so Sophia, you are an incredibly impressive young woman. Monica, we miss you in the office and wish you'd come back and work with us. And so I want to thank these folks, and I want to thank literally the hundreds of young people who had a hand in this and gave us advice about what it is. Again, this is really about putting a stake in the ground. It's about changing systems and changing culture of how we think to make sure all of our young people get what they need to be successful. So with that, I want to move the item.
I think it's moved and seconded already, right?
No.
Okay, is there a second?
There is a second from Councilmember Jennings.
Very good. It's been moved and seconded. Great work, everybody. And this is not your last spotlight, okay?
No, we got more coming.
More to go. Very good. Let's call the roll.
Mayor Pro Tem Ashby.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Aye.
Councilmember Chenier.
Aye.
Councilmember Getta.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings.
Aye.
Councilmember Carr.
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg.
Aye. That's unanimous. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
That is great. Let us now move to Item 7, which is the issue relating tobacco retailers. Who is going to present this in a succinct and clear way for us?
Good evening, Mayor.
Mendez?
Be as brief as I can. It's a little long, though.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Jose Mendez with the Community Development Department. As you know, this council adopted amendments in Chapter 5.138 last year, strengthening tobacco regulations. The amendments included a distance requirement prohibiting the issuance of a tobacco license to another retailer located within 1,000 feet. The intent of these regulations was to reduce tobacco retailer density, which have proven to be effective by reducing inequities in the location and distribution of tobacco retailers. Inadvertently, the distance requirement has impacted locations and submitted a planning application before the amendments took place. On September 1, 2020, staff presented a three-part amendment to Chapter 5.138 to the Law and Legislation Committee. The First Amendment exempts locations from the distance requirement if a planning application was applied for before January 1, 2020, allowing for the issuance of a license unless the application is denied or withdrawn. There are six locations that submitted for a planning application entitlement before January 1, 2020 that would benefit from this exemption. Only one of the six locations currently has an approved conditional use permit to retail tobacco. The remaining locations are required to obtain a CUP in retail tobacco, even if the pipeline amendment were adopted. The Second Amendment exempts locations from a distance requirement. The location devotes less than 5% of total shelf space to tobacco and/or to sell healthy food, including fresh fruits and vegetables, dairy products, meat, fish, or poultry, and breads and cereals. The final amendment allows a tobacco retailer to retain their license in the event they close for up to a year, provided the closure is for renovation or construction. Currently, a tobacco retailer may lose their license if they cease retailing tobacco for 60 consecutive days, regardless of the reason. Some of the committee members expressed concern with the first two amendments, the pipeline and the healthy food amendment, because it would allow the issuance of additional tobacco licenses within city limits. Two of the four committee members motioned to only move the first and the third amendment forward. The healthy food exemption was not part of that motion. The remaining committee members voted not to move any of the amendments forward to the council. At the October 13 city council meeting, Mayor Pro Tem Ashby directed staff to identify if all pipeline projects are in compatible zoning. Staff identified that one location is not in compatible zoning, located at 4100 Duckhorn Drive, and is currently in process of being rezoned from Employment Center 50 to General Commercial. At the same city council meeting, Councilmember Warren requested that staff provide options to address locations that are impacted by the distance requirement pertaining to tobacco retailers that seek to offer fresh produce to address food deserts in his district. Councilmember Guerra expressed concern about permitting additional smoke shops if the proposed amendments were adopted or if the healthy food exemption was considered by the council. In response to the request by Councilmember Ashby, Warren, and Guerra, the City Attorney's Office provided supplemental material which provides optional language, titled as Attachment 1 and 2. Attachment 1 sets forth optional language regarding eligible pipeline applications. Attachment 2 sets forth optional language addressing the requirement of fresh food sales. The third attachment was provided by a stakeholder, drafted by a stakeholder, providing alternative language for fresh food produce sales. I would like to note a typo in Attachment 1. The City Code section in the attachment reads 17.8080.230, but it should read 17.8080.230. That concludes my presentation. I'm available to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay. We do have some public testimony on this item. Why don't we hear from a couple members of the public? And then we'll turn it over to the council for discussion. Thank you for the presentation.
Thank you. May I have my first caller, please? Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council. This is Ryan Hooper with the Law Offices of Gregory Thatch this evening, representing 7-Eleven. With regard to the tobacco ordinance, we wanted to let you know that we support the proposal from staff, in particular, the Alternative Number 2 and Alternative Number 3. We suspect that you may be more supportive of Alternative Number 3, given the fact that it includes additional safeguards with respect to requiring a certain percentage of fresh food be sold, as well as identifying particular foods that make up the definition of fresh food. We stand by, ready to answer any questions that you may have with respect to the proposal in front of you this evening.
Okay, are there questions for Mr. Hooper? Okay, maybe, can you stay on the line or not?
I can't keep him on the line. I need to take the next caller.
Okay, let's take the next caller. Thank you.
Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Okay.
Okay, are there questions for Mr.?
Please turn down the audio on the device you're watching the meeting. It's your turn to address the council.
Caller, please.
Yeah, hi, my name is Amric. I'm the applicant for Express Lane Chevron at Otomus. And just want to follow and say that we support this.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Just want to say that we support this ordinance. And if you guys have any questions, we could go ahead and answer those.
Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg, Vice Mayor Harris, and esteemed council members. My name is Milton Nguyen, and I'm a National Youth Ambassador for the Campaign for Tobacco Free Kids. And I'm also a local youth advocate for tobacco control. Nearly a year and a half ago, I stood before this very same council behind the lectern in City Hall on I Street. To quote myself that night, I was there speaking not with joy, but with the burden of knowing that my peers, classmates, and friends were dying at the expense of tobacco. Tonight, that concern holds true once more. Big tobacco will stop at nothing to continue its rampage of our city, our community, and human lives. That night, we saw a monumental victory for the health of Sacramento residents and youth through the passage of strong and decisive density restrictions on tobacco retailers. As strong of a policy as it is, any exemption would exponentially decrease its ability to protect the human lives of our city. With 23 times more tobacco retailers than McDonald's within Sacramento, and with 33% of public schools within 1,000 feet of a tobacco retailer in our city, we should not be considering exemptions for tobacco retailers that violate the policy in place. With the strong correlation between high tobacco retailer density and high rates of tobacco usage and initiation with youth, this amendment would only harm our community. During this COVID-19 pandemic, a pandemic that primarily capitalizes on compromised lung health, we should not be increasing the number of tobacco retailers in our city. To put it bluntly, doing so will turn our citizens into guinea pigs in a ruthless experiment to see how tobacco users fare against COVID-19. Please, council members, I beg of you to vote no on this ordinance in order to protect and uphold current tobacco retailer density policy, and more importantly, to protect the citizens and the youth of Sacramento. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I have no more callers on this item.
Okay. I just want to ask an initial question about the timing and some of the history here, just so that as I'm listening to my colleagues talk about the various potential amendments, I have it in context. As I understand it, and I should remember it, because I was here, that it was August 27 of 2019 that the city council amended Title 17 to restrict, if you will... to restrict, if you will, the, the ability of a tobacco retailer to to sell tobacco in the city. Is that right, Mr. Mendez?
Mayor, yes. Title 5 was amended in April of 2019 to incorporate a proximity requirement, ban the sale of flavored tobacco, and a couple of other items.
Okay.
In August, Title 17 was amended to require a conditional use permit to retail tobacco throughout the city.
In August of 2019?
That's correct.
Okay, so then, well, here's what's confusing to me about the grandfathering requirement. Staff brings forward on September 1st, 2020, a proposal to grandfather, but the grandfathering are for those who requested a planning entitlement application that was submitted prior to January 1st, 2020.
Sure, let me clarify. I apologize. The amendments entitled 5 were adopted in April of 2019, but council decided to delay the implementation of the proximity requirement and other regulations in Title 5 until January 1st to allow retailers time to deplete their, their inventory.
So, but, but fair to say that after August of 2019, that any prospective applicants knew that this restriction was going to go into place effective January 1st, 2020, right?
That is correct, and, and the six applicants that were part of the pipeline were already in a process of obtaining their planning application prior to even April 19th, or April 2019.
Oh, that's in, okay, so that's a significant, that, that's what I'm trying to understand.
Wait, Mayor, wait, that's a really important question. Jose, can you say that again?
Sure, that of the six locations, all six had submitted for a planning entitlement even prior to April 2019, before council considered the amendments to Title 5.
I, I'll have follow-up, but I'll wait till after you're done, Mayor.
Okay, so that, I'm not weighing in yet because I've got to listen to all of it, but I really, that I needed to understand when they applied, when we changed, when we restricted, and then the timing of this suggested grandfathering. Now I think I have a better understanding. Okay. Thank you. Who, who wants to go first here?
Alan has signed up, Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilman Warren. Can't hear you, Alan.
There we go. I said I think others were signed up before me, but I'm happy to go. You know, I think the, the idea that we want to restrict tobacco, and we've already taken action, I think, stands on its own. Obviously, it's something that we've considered, and we want to make sure that, you know, we try to keep our community as safe and healthy as possible. I think that, in, in, in my case, in District 2, though, we need to have some balance as it relates to the ability to attract people that will make investments in communities that will bring in some of the other things that are even more dire, you know, like food. And so, we've had some success. We've had three grocery stores open. We have two additional that hopefully will be announced pretty soon, major grocery stores. But we don't want to restrict the opportunity for District 2 and communities that are impacted like District 2 from having some of the same things that most of the city has. You know, District 2 is still considered a food desert. And so, you know, I think that needs to weigh very heavily on the decisions, particularly on the applicants that are in play, that, that have applied. I think one of them may be applying in District 2. I'm not exactly sure, but I think so. But I also believe that we need to be able to attract more full-service grocers. And as we all know, full-service grocers do offer things like alcohol, tobacco, things that help them, you know, balance out the investment, if you will, and provide a higher quality of opportunity for people to shop in, 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 in their community. So they won't have to leave to drive to some of your, your communities to buy some of the same products. And so, I think from my perspective, the option 3 that allows certain types of high-quality food would warrant consideration for are, consideration for approval. And I would, I would be in support of, of a amendment that would allow the kinds of things that are missing from our district, like fresh fruit, meats, vegetables, and would also restrict the shelf space. So it would minimize the shelf space for things like tobacco. Thank you.
Thank you. I see Councilmember Hanson with his hand up.
Mayor Protem might have been next. Angelique, would you like to go?
Okay.
Sure, I'm sure I can go. Thanks, Mayor. I, you know, I have, first of all, I'm just really proud of the city for, and all of you, all of you, for the work that we've done to get this far, banning flavored tobacco, banning flavored smoke shops. I mean, we are really down to the nitty-gritty here. We are only allowing cigarettes and tobacco products in very limited instances. I'm really proud of Sacramento for that. And I know my colleagues well enough to know there is not a single person on here who wants to do anything to increase tobacco usage or tobacco access to anybody. I know that's not our goal here, but Councilmember Warren makes a really solid point. There are parts of our city that are food deserts. I don't represent ones, but I watched Alan fight really hard for the grocery stores that he's got. And I, and when I first ran for office and Councilmember Hanson was my constituent, his neighbors asked me, and he and I joke about this all the time, because they used to say things to me like, "I just need a place to get milk and cat food." And there was nothing downtown. Now, Councilmember Hanson, like Councilmember Warren, has also brought full grocery downtown and into his district. I think he's brought at least two. So, but prior to having those council members who could come do that, both of those gentlemen represented areas that had no access, nowhere where you could go pick up some fresh fruit and some milk for your family without having to drive all the way to Natomas. Most of the time downtown was going to South Natomas, and Alan's district shops a lot in my district. So I think that's an important component for us, and whether it's worded exactly right or not in, in Option 3, I don't really know, but I am willing to make a motion and then hear my colleagues out and make amendments as we go, and just start with Option 3, and talk about what we would all like to see. I would also, though, like to say, I want to make sure that of the grandfathered sites that the council members weigh in on whether or not they think those sites should be grandfathered. I do not think that a site that has incompatible zoning now should be able to be grandfathered into this, because that would mean anyone in the city who owned anything, a residence, could have applied for a tobacco license and just sat on it until later when the zoning changed, or they tried to change the zoning for whatever their structure was, to be able to sell tobacco products there. So I, I'm going to make a motion that we talk about and potentially pass here, the staff's version 3, that includes the ability to sell tobacco products, but as Councilmember Warren has said, limiting the shelf space, probably putting it behind the counter, and putting fresh food up front, and making sure that it is a significant amount of fresh food, and it's not, as Councilmember Gara often says, a bowl of lemons. That is not good enough. That's a Councilmember Gara tagline, and I agree with him 100%. And adding the language to remove any entity from the grandfathered group that does not have compatible zoning, which I think would be in Section B, Jose. So that would be my motion, but I'm very open to whatever comments you guys want to make to, to make adjustments.
I'm going to second your motion.
Okay.
So, we've got Steve Hanson. Go ahead, Steve.
Thanks, Mayor. I think a lot of people know that the underlying ordinance to ban flavored tobacco to really revamp and dramatically change our tobacco retail license program was something that I fought very hard for. We had hundreds of people constantly filling our chambers opposed to those changes, and we stood up to them, but I feel responsible because I led that charge. I called for the change. Councilmember Ashby called for the change to Title 17, that, the CUP. And it actually, those two things were born at the same time for a variety of reasons, and they converged last year. The time of adoption in April, there were a couple of final things that needed to be worked out. One was this pipeline issue. And if you remember, I had gone that morning on a trip with LGBT leaders to Tijuana to see the status of refugees, LGBT refugees at the border seeking asylum in their state. So I flew out early that morning, and I flew back just in time for this hearing. Literally, the plane landed at like 4:30, and I ran down to City Hall to make the council meeting. We didn't get a chance to finish this pipeline issue that day because of the timing. I made a commitment to several of you who raised it, because there are several projects, including one in my district in Natomas on West El Camino, where they had applied prior. They're working with the community. That project on West El Camino just was approved by the Planning Commission last week, and it made a very 7-Elevens committed to a large-format store with grocery with a concept called Laredo Taco, and it's totally different. They agreed with the neighborhood, too, to not seek an alcohol CUP because the neighborhood didn't want that, and the neighborhood is supportive of this TRL. And so it's those kind of issues, and there's six, maybe five now, potential pieces to the pipeline. I also led the charge in 2014, I want to say, to bring our urban ag laws up to standard. And, you know, that was a very hard-fought to issue, too, because we had a lot of food deserts all over the city, but particularly in the south and the north. And we wanted to find ways to bring fresh food to communities. So I think what Councilmember Warren said, and even some of the folks that I represent, where we, we didn't have the grocery stores we needed to support people, it, I, I'm very sympathetic. I, I'm, I'm willing to support the motion. I think everyone knows that this is an issue. My grandparents died of smoking-related cancer. I know on this council, we have a lot of passionate people who want to protect our kids. And the underlying ordinance is one of the strongest in the entire state. These changes, well, I know the advocate community does not particularly like them. I think they should continue to not like them, but in the end, I think these are minor overall changes to an extremely robust program that will continue to protect our kids, continue to protect our neighborhoods, but offer some opportunities to bring fresh food potentially. And on the pipeline, hopefully, once and for all, just solve that issue. I'd encourage the council to revisit the fresh food issue after it's gotten some legs to see how that's going. And the last thing is, the tobacco retail license is a privilege, not a right. It can be taken away. It can be given. It's not an entitlement. And so, in the end, if that program isn't working, I think the council can easily revisit it and, and withdraw those licenses later. But for those reasons, I'm going to support this, even though it's a very difficult decision. And I appreciate the, the wise comments of my colleagues.
Councilman Gata?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also, I like the, the reason I voted to not support it in, in law and legislation was because I, at the time, I felt that there was a loophole to being able to get these smoke shops back in. And, you know, I think, you know, the, the challenge, most of the applicants that I see here, at least from what staff has recommended, are all gas stations that had already been applied, and so they weren't, that wasn't their primary you know, market. And I, I think that the smoke shops that we had and vape shops were one that were directly targeting and, and, and many of the times in our commercial corridors, like Stockton Boulevard, Folsom Boulevard, that were proliferating. And so what I didn't want to happen is that, all of a sudden, you'd have this, this, this business entity that would find this loophole to come through and, as I said, you know, you know, give the community a bag of, you know, a bowl of lemons by saying, "Hey, we're off, offering fresh produce." And, and I think the, the, this you know, proposal of 5% of, of, of shelf space for tobacco products and at least 10% of shelf space for healthy fruits, meats, poultry, baked goods, you know, the, that clearly makes the, that part of the, of the of the product not the primary, not the primary source of income or targeting. The, those smoke shops that were proliferating the city, you found them in strip malls. You found them not adding to the quality of the area. And what I think, you know, Councilmember Warren, and I know I've faced it myself here, trying to find, you know, a bigger retailer for a grocery store in the Old Talley Village Center, and even in the, the, in Oak Park, where we're trying to find other grocery stores. This becomes a challenge, but I think this is a, you know, not that I'm happy with it. I understand the, the market mechanics of it, but I, I think it, it narrows it very tailorily to the, to a, a group of folks that are not a 100% or even a preponderance of their business, targeting tobacco. So I like, that is, I think, the, the concern that I had and why I couldn't support it then. And I feel that I, this is in a better position now that we're here.
Mayor, can I ask my colleague a question, please?
Of course.
Councilmember Gara, do you think we should go ahead and add, like, language that excludes smoke shops entirely so that that can never be contested later? What do you think?
Does, I, I, my understanding is that already is encompassed in it. Let me ask Jose.
Yeah, Jose should, do we need something like that? Because I agree with him. He's 100% right.
As you know, it's not in the ordinance now. I would have to defer to the city attorney to see if that's even legal.
I think we can do it. I think we can just direct staff to include that this, that the food exemption doesn't apply in any way to smoke shops.
We did cover this with the attorneys at one point, Councilmember. I'm sorry to interject.
Okay.
If I remember the way the definitions are amended, this is a grocery use that it applies to. A smoke shop is a separate entitlement, and so.
So it shouldn't apply. Okay, great.
But if that's, I think the staff should come back and.
Yeah, I think if, if we can make it very explicit in the, in this language, I think that's great, because Eric's right, and none of us want to see that happen.
So, I, um, usually as mayor, I think three-plus years, I mean, I always want to be with the majority and even help craft the compromise. I, somebody can mute their phone with the dog. It's a little loud. I, I, I appreciate and respect exactly where you're all coming from, and the result will be okay. For me, I just, I don't, I just cannot get to the place where I can agree to the necessity of combining tobacco in order to gain fresh food, or, or to say that we have to accept more tobacco in our communities in order to get what we need. And I know that may be the economic reality, which is why I respect your position. But for me, I, I'm going to vote no.
Mayor?
Yeah.
So I, I'm very pleased to say that you and I are lockstep on this. You know, the, the ordinance that we fought for was hard-fought and hard-won. And I see this just as kind of weaseling in some more tobacco uses. You know, when we were adopting the ordinance, we heard a lot of testimony from a lot of disadvantaged communities about how they are targeted, how tobacco products always find their ways into the hands of youth. And I don't think that selling some fresh fruits and vegetables is reason enough to allow tobacco sales. I voted no on this at, at Law &amp; Legge, and I'm like you. I can't bring myself to support this. I think that we created a strong ordinance and a good ordinance, and I intend to stand by it and vote no.
Okay, Councilman Chenier?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I'm in the same place with councilmember Harris and yourself. I wasn't happy with the food piece when we were at lawn ledge. I'm still not. And so for, for the reasons you've, you've laid out, I'm going to vote no as well. I think there's other ways to get food in our neighborhoods. We, we, we have, we do well on farmers markets. I think there's other things that we can do and what we need to do is really educate people around the, and, and increase the demand for that. And if we can increase the demand, it's going to come on its own. So I'd rather, I'd rather work that way. So I'll be voting no as well.
Councilman Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I very seldom disagree with the vice mayor. But on this one, I think Alan has put forward a very reasonable compromise. The grocery businesses are very, very, they have very tight margins. And that's one of the reasons you see so many grocery stores go into the outlet format. Because the margins are so tight, one percent in the grocery business. I can't think of a grocery store I've been to that didn't sell alcohol, tobacco. And some other things that should be regulated like spray paint. But they, they sell all of those things. And if we're going to incentivize, if we're going to get people to come into the food deserts, like Metta View is a food desert as well. Then they can't make it unless they can sell the full range of products. Because the margins are so slim on the vegetables and the meats that they sell. So I'm going to be, I'm going to support the motion. That, and we can always come back and revisit this, I would imagine. Well, you can come back and revisit it at some other point. But I'm going to support.
We can, councilmember Carr, I think councilmember Hanson suggested that too. We can just add it to the motion that there be. A, a report back in, say, a year to let us know how that's going. We'll add that. Okay. Alan, is that, is that okay with you, Alan?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, then that's part of the motion without objection. All right, I think it's been a clear and good discussion. There is a motion on the floor. Let's call the roll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Did I miss something?
Councilmember Jennings has this.
Oh, I'm sorry, Rick. Go, go.
No problem, Mayor. I, I, um, I wasn't, I didn't have the opportunity to be in lawn ledge with my colleagues. And so I don't have the full breadth and depth of the conversation that took place in those meetings. And I appreciate their efforts in trying to reach some kind of compromise with this measure. When I look at the potential of five percent shelf space and ten percent of fresh foods. I kind of look at it as maybe the beginning of the education process. In some of these food desert locations. And hopefully over time, we can change the percentages of what should be on the shelves and help people live a healthier lifestyle. But if we don't at least start with the ten percent shelf space and try to move towards that direction. Then you will end up with high profit margins on tobacco. And you will end up with a lot of these places potentially becoming tobacco shops or some rendition of a tobacco shop with more tobacco. Uh, and more products that we don't want than the products that we do want. So I'm going to support the motion because I think it's a starting point. And I think it's incumbent upon us to try to change these locations and show them that even though there are slim margins on all products. They can get, make money because more people will be visiting their shops to get the products that they need to have a healthier lifestyle. So I will be supporting the motion tonight that's on the table.
Okay, I think everyone has had a, councilmember Geta.
You know, this one I've been struggling with this whole time and I, I, I feel, uh. You know, that you bring up some good and salient points, councilmember Chenier. And I'd like to ask, ask a question here because you and I have been trying to make sure that we get markets in. And food sources in our area and it's been a challenge, you know, that, that's a tough business. But, you know, having struggled with, you know, get, you know, kicking the tobacco addiction myself and being addicted to it. You know, as a, in fourth grade of all things. You know, this is where, you know, I'm struggling here with the, with a couple of competing interests. So you mentioned that there are other ways to also get food supplies out. And I'd like to get your thoughts on that because I, I think this, while this may be a small area. I mean, it, it really, to me, I think it's, it, it's a question about two very, very needing competing interests. And, uh, and, and I guess, and I, and I feel the same point, you know? Do we need to have tobacco as it, but you know, so I'd love, love to get your thoughts on that.
Sure. It's okay, Mayor.
Yes.
I, I think there's a couple of things. I mean, as I said, I think increasing the farmers markets that we have is going to be important. But I also think, you know, a, a lot of, a lot of the demand that doesn't occur for healthy foods. Is because of, and I'm going to go back to the youth issue today. Is because I don't know that we educate our young people about healthy foods and about growing their own. And in cases where schools and, and they educate around community gardens and things like that. They're going to eat healthier as they go forward. You know, it's, it's one of the things that we're really looking at as we redo our city tree nursery. To make sure that we get young people in to get it again, educated when they, when they grow their own, when they see what it tastes like. The demand will go up and, and I think this is a, a question of demand that we can do it. Again, I think there are the farmers markets pieces. And I understand clearly that this is a, an important profit center for these folks. I just don't think it's the right thing to do. But I think it's an education issue for the most part.
To your point. And, and, and to that point, I mean, I, it's, uh. We're, we're leading that way in education. You know, I think the motion, uh, councilmember Ashby said to come back in a year and see how this is going. I could see the votes on, on this item here. I, I just, you know, I think the, the thing I've been struggling with it is it's, it's such an addictive product. If in a year, uh, this, this is really still inhibiting the ability to get grocery stores. I think we should have that tough question, but, uh. You know, it still makes me uncomfortable. I, I feel like this really cuts out the smoke shops, but it still makes me very uncomfortable.
Okay, let us call a roll in on the motion on the floor, please.
I'd like to add one thing, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Terms of the healthy food, I would encourage you to go to a grocery store in Esack or Trader Joe's or Safeway. And then visit one of the outlet stores that are in the low income areas. And what you will find is in the low income areas, they don't sell light products. They don't sell diet products. They don't sell less fat. They don't sell the types of choices that you could make in the store. To lessen your caloric intake. So the next time you're in one of those outlet stores and the next time you go to Rayleigh's, just look at the things that you buy that are low fat. And see if you can find them in the low income areas.
So how do you, how do you change that, Larry?
I think it's one, is it's a matter of education. But two, I think we can start working with our grocery retailers to encourage them to start giving consumers more choices. The assumption is that you want the high fat peanut butter.
Let me, let me just, Larry, can I add to that, you know? One, one of the other fallacies is, is that people think that because you're in a low income area. When you go into a grocery store, a, a loaf of bread is going to cost the same in a low income area that it costs in a suburban or a higher. Income area. And that's not the case. If you come into places like Del Paso Heights and go into the grocery store, you will see essentially price gouging. You will see higher prices for lower quality foods. And that is a recipe for continuing to suppress people and keep them in poverty. And not allowing them to access to the things that we all say we want. And so if you don't know, maybe, I would suggest that maybe there is a, a, a tour set up where you can go into grocery stores and price. And price the groceries in some of these stores and compare them to Rayleigh's and Safeway and some of the others.
Mr. Warren, if I may, Alan, how does this ordinance help? I mean, it just seems to me that it has the potential to exacerbate everything you're talking about.
No, what it does is it creates competition. Competition helps. Okay. I mean, that's a, you know, economics one oh one.
Okay. Thank you. Now let us call the roll on, on the motion. Good, good discussion, everybody.
Mayor, can I, I just, I got a note from Susanna. Susanna, do you have what you need from us to be clear on the motion?
Yes, Mayor Protem Ashby. The motion is to amend the ordinance utilizing attachment one and attachment three.
And to put, and to come back in a year and to put the exclusion language on smoke shops. And to make sure that the tobacco is behind the counter and the fresh fruit is at the front of the store.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Okay. Thank you for all the clarity and again, good discussion. Let's call the roll.
Mayor Protem Ashby?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris?
No.
Councilmember Hanson?
A reluctant yes.
Councilmember Chenier?
No.
Councilmember Geta?
No.
Councilmember Jennings?
Yes.
Councilmember Carr?
Yes.
And Mayor Steinberg?
No. That motion passes five to four. Very good. Good, good, again, good debate. Appreciate it, everybody. Let's move to the last item, the last two items of the night, which are items eight and nine. And maybe this is, I'm going to make a brief introduction, if I may, before we turn it over to you. You know, we're talking about how to alleviate generational poverty. How to provide genuine economic opportunity to people in all of our neighborhoods. Maybe this is our signature opportunity. In fact, I believe this is our lead signature opportunity in the city, Aggie Square. Which all of you know a little bit of the history and I'll be very brief about it. But this arose out of a conversation in Atlanta, Georgia between Chancellor May, myself and some business leaders back several years ago. Where the chancellor had, had launched Tech Square at Georgia Tech University. And as he was coming to Sacramento, we all asked the question. How do we bring UC Davis more across the river? And how do we create a partnership that will create not only a big gain for the university? But for our city, especially as we are working to elevate inclusive economic development and create more jobs and more industry. And we're going to hear a lot tonight and over the months about the very real need to make sure that. The benefits of this project are felt in the adjoining communities, including the essential affordable housing issue. But I ask all of us, as we have this discussion and debate, not just tonight, but over the next couple of months to remember. That Sacramento desperately needs more industry and more high wage job opportunities for our people. Especially people in the neighborhoods that we are all so rightfully concerned about. And there is not a larger opportunity to create more jobs, more employers, more industries in the life science and the technology. And the innovation spheres of our city. And for every challenge we face, we must overcome it. But in my view, man, we have to move forward and take advantage of something that, um, in a way is a gift. Because the psychic distance between UC Davis and our city, that causeway has been long and vast. And it no longer is because we've got not just a willing university, we've got an eager university, an eager university leadership. And I want to thank councilmembers Chenier and Guerra especially for being so engaged as they are in making sure that this is done right by the community. I'm with them on that all the way. And to thank our city staff that has worked so hard to get us to this point. This is just the beginning. But I just want to bookmark, if you will, how significant an opportunity I believe this is. Uh, for the long-term future of our city, of our neighborhoods and our entire region. Leslie, Ms. Fritchy, thank you for your leadership. Are you there?
Hi, good morning or good afternoon.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good evening. Um, so I'm Leslie Fritchy with your Office of Innovation and Economic Development. And Mayor, I can't thank you for those opening comments. I think you really have set a tone for the presentation tonight. Um, and I am joined with representatives from UC Davis and Wexford Science and Technology. To share with you an overview of what is described, and certainly in your words, described as a transformative health and life sciences innovation project known as Aggie Square. The presentation will include the following components.
Hey, Leslie, if I may interrupt you just for a second, I would like to make sure that we take items eight and nine together. So in terms of your presentation, why don't, you know, we make sure we go through the whole thing. And I know item nine is a, is a voting item. But let's, let's make the presentation eight and nine together, please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So tonight I would like to walk through a few elements. I'm just the introductory speaker. I, as I mentioned, I am here with UC Davis representatives as well as representatives from Wexford Science and Technology. So the presentation will outline economic context for the project, uh, project overview. Uh, the request that has been made of the city to participate in the project. And that translates to an EIFD process and timeline, next steps and questions. So the economic context for the project is one that is really significant. And I don't think I have to remind anyone today or the importance of health and its impact on the daily life of us all. COVID nineteen has brought that reality home to us in a way we could barely have imagined when this year began. Nationwide investments in health and life sciences have exploded and been one of the main areas of technological advancement. Here's a few facts. So while most companies in the past a year have changed and, and modified and even dipped in their economic and employment outlook. Biotech R and D employment has been particularly strong, up over six percent from a year ago and outpacing tech employment growth. Total venture capital funding for the life science industry for the year ending in the second quarter of 2020 was a record eighteen billion dollars. So here in Sacramento, health sciences is the second largest employer in our local economy with approximately three hundred thousand jobs. The city's scale up Sacramento program and project and Valley Vision's regional prosperity strategy highlighted as the key business sector to focus on. To propel our economy into the future. Strategic growth in this sector can reposition Sacramento's economy towards becoming a center for high growth, technology-driven industries. Shifting from a government-based economy to networks and aligned workforce development and inclusion strategies within the community. That's why the goal is for Aggie Square. It's designed to be the intersection of innovation, entrepreneurial creativity and knowledge. Be a hub for new technology and a source of jobs and engagement with the larger community. Projects across the country have prospered when there is a strong tie to the community and a link between the activities of the innovation district and the surrounding area. Innovation districts such as proposed tonight are centered around universities and catalyze growth for those communities. So let's hear a bit from the people that are really the experts on the project. And that's Bob Speaker of UC Davis and Doug Woodruff from Wexford.
Great. Thank, thank you very much, Leslie, and, and thank you, Mayor Steinberg and members of the city council for your time tonight. It's very exciting to share progress on, on the Aggie Square project and this is a big milestone. This photograph that you're looking at here is from April of two thousand eighteen. This photograph that you're looking at here is from April of 2018. And you can see the assembled there with Chancellor May announcing that we would begin the planning for this Aggie Square initiative on the UC Davis Sacramento campus, which is home to UC Davis Health. The four goals that we have outlined there have really been in the front of the room the entire time, and I want to go through them really quickly. The first one, of course, is to create a stronger university through the innovation and entrepreneurship partnerships that we want to build at Aggie Square. And as the mayor said, to leverage that university research to propel economic development and diversity of the economy in Sacramento in an inclusive way, which gets us to number three. And again, thanks to councilmembers Shenier and Guerra of contributing to our immediately adjacent neighborhoods to add to their resiliency and create direct opportunities to benefit neighborhoods as Aggie Square moves forward. The fourth goal is kind of a how-to goal, to make sure we, the place we create has shared public spaces, opens up the university to Stockton Boulevard and to our neighbors to create a welcome environment as people approach the university. So if there is a location, the university is in the colored zones there. About 150 acres is the Sacramento campus along Stockton Boulevard for UC Davis. The hospital is in blue at the north. So you move around the right-hand side in orange, that's the ambulatory clinics and patient care. The education corps is in the middle in pink. That's where the School of Medicine, the Betty I. Reed Moore School of Nursing, and some research buildings are. And then Aggie Square is an eight-acre parcel right along Stockton Boulevard in what we're calling the Collaboration and Research Zone, which really brings the whole campus together with the community. Some of the economic impact facts are up in the box on the upper right, where you can see the total capital investment and the jobs, construction jobs from Phase 1 of Aggie Square, again, that eight-acre parcel, four buildings and a parking structure, and the ongoing jobs once the doors open. So this truly is a partnership project from the beginning with City of Sacramento, with our neighborhoods, now with the developer Wexford Science and Technology and UC Davis. So that's what it will look like. To get you oriented, up in the very top left of this slide is the UC Davis Hospital. Just below that is the Shriners Hospital, and you come down Stockton Boulevard, and the four new buildings that are shown there are part of Aggie Square. And Leslie, if you could just advance some of the labels up there. Yeah, we can just fill this slide. One more. Perfect. Thank you. I won't go into the detail here, but this begins to identify some of the initial programs and partnerships. And the difference, the thing that's different about Aggie Square, it's not a typical university development, it's not a typical commercial development. If it was just a typical university research development, we'd find a site on campus, we'd look for state funds to build it, and we'd build a research building that was just us. Aggie Square is going to be about half filled by the university, which leaves the other half to be filled by industry partners, private investment, growing new industries, educational partners, community-based organizations, so that it is a partnership co-location campus leveraging the energy and the research at the university. I want to share for just a second, I won't go into detail on these, but how it's different, it's anchored by the work of the university and the partnerships that are really intended to advance the public good. The lifelong learning tower will be a new home for our continuing and professional education team and for the partnerships they're building with community colleges and industry partners to create a new life sciences training consortium. Our developer, Wexford, you'll hear from him in a minute, reports that these communities they built with other major universities and academic medical centers in cities like Sacramento typically have 25% to 35% of the jobs that don't require a four-year degree. This building will house training programs for truly lifelong education to prepare local community members to succeed in these new industry areas. There are two lab buildings that are called Life Sciences, Technology, and Engineering on this drawing. There you'll see industry partners bringing their expertise and their products and their services to areas like regenerative medicine and stem cells, helping bring new cures and new therapies to market and to the patients that need them. We can't do that without partnerships that go beyond the university to include industry and the training for the people who will work there. The Market Plaza, you see right there, a new public space right on Stockton Boulevard, is gonna be home to our food and health initiatives, such as the partnership with the Alice Waters Foundation. It will focus on, we were talking about food and health earlier. This institute will focus on the research and the policy and the operational work needed to bring free, sustainable, healthy school lunch to every school child in California. That's its mission with Benefits First in Sacramento. So all of this will be in partnership with our faculty, our students, our city, our neighborhoods, our business community. I know we would need to move on and talk about the ways the city can participate, continue to participate, but I want to reinforce that the project itself is a different kind of project. Thank you. That's a picture. Now you're standing in Aggie Square looking north towards the hospital. We took some trees out so you could see better. But that's the lifelong learning building. On the right, the two lab buildings straight ahead, and the residential building with the food and health initiatives on the first floor to your left. So a new public space, new public spaces that will add to the fabric of Sacramento. I'm gonna hand it over to Doug Woodruff from Wexford Science and Technology to introduce himself and his company and why they're coming to Sacramento to partner with us.
Okay. Now, I want to add my thank you, Bob, to you, the chancellor, the entire UC Davis team who have worked, you know, for over a year on on a great vision. And the city always talked about being your partner, and tonight is really the first substantive move, at least formally, towards that partnership. And so I just want to acknowledge your work and the work of your team, dedicated public servants. Really appreciate it.
Thank you so much, Mayor Steinberg. Really appreciate it.
Okay. What's next on the presentation?
So Doug Woodruff from Wexford.
I believe it's me.
Doug Woodruff from Wexford. Yes, sir.
Mayor, thank you, and thank you to the council members for giving us this opportunity. And I have to say also thank you to Bob, Chancellor May, and the leadership at the University of California Davis, who's given us this opportunity to be their partner. I would start by saying pretty simply that Wexford's business philosophy is the philosophy I think we're all hoping to go forward with, and that is we follow the science. We follow the science to help economic development, create jobs both in the construction side and long-term jobs in lots of areas of life and bioscience. We also follow the science in order to spawn innovation and entrepreneurship that's gonna create new businesses and new opportunities for people in the community. And finally, we follow the science to help and build communities in and around our knowledge communities, and we can talk a lot more about that in a little bit. Wexford has been doing this exclusively with major universities, academic medical centers, and research institutes for the last 15 years. We pick cities very much like Sacramento to be in. And it shouldn't be lost on this group that what we're trying to do here could not be done in Davis. It could not be done in many other cities in the state of California. But Sacramento gives us a unique opportunity to work with UC Davis and the city and others to make it something that really will be a difference-maker for Northern California. Our approach is pretty simple. We, if you'll go to the next slide, we do like to attract companies, but mostly we want to attract innovation and entrepreneurship. That can come from big companies, but it also comes much more often from individual researchers who have an idea and cultivate that idea into a small company, and then from that small company, it becomes a bigger company. If you look at what's going on today, just simply in this microcosm of COVID and people who are looking for both therapeutics as well as immunotherapies of other types, they started at a bench that you can see right there. It started with science as small as one or two people working on them, and very quickly they grow. What we believe is that in combination with the university and the research that goes on, we can attract companies from all over California, from around the United States and internationally to come and set up shop in Aggie Square. Those companies come and they create a number of jobs. 25% to 35% of all those jobs don't require a four-year degree from a university. There are lots of tech jobs. There's lots of opportunity to retrain and to train people to take on new opportunities. This is not a, this is not a large sector of that healthcare world that Leslie already talked about. Most of that work in Sacramento today is on a clinical basis. What we're hoping to do is help transform the biosciences development side of the business into, you know, as Bob said, between 2,000 and 4,000 new jobs for the area. So how do we do it? We offer innovation infrastructure. We offer the opportunity for people to come together, to collaborate, to think of new ways to solve problems, and then to marshal those solutions through innovation and through entrepreneurship into new businesses that then can grow and stay in Sacramento as they grow. So we're looking forward to the opportunity. I would say one other thing, we're really pleased to be here tonight because as I showed you on the last slide, in the 15 markets we work with, each of those markets has very strong partnerships with our cities, because we can't do this alone. We're not trying to create an island unto itself. What we really are hoping to do with the support of you all, as well as the university, is to create an open, porous academic and business center that everybody has a part of and everybody can participate in. So we'll look forward to continuing to have these discussions, and Leslie, I'll turn it back to you. Or am I going back to Bob? I can't remember.
I believe it's back to Bob, but we'll advance the slides, so Bob can start talking about the community benefits and some of the outreach you've done with the community itself.
Thank you, Leslie and Doug, and I'll be brief, council members and mayor, but just try to give you an overview of the platform and the approach and the progress that we're making together with community members and city on on community benefits, which again, as mentioned earlier, is a critical part of this whole process leading towards the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, is clarifying and codifying these community benefits. So across the top, or just in short form, some of the engagement that we've been doing for the over two years that we've been planning Aggie Square, both through the university's activities, the City of Sacramento's been doing lots of planning in the Stockton Boulevard corridor, Wexford, since they've arrived less than a year ago, has done a lot of outreach and engagement, interviewing on their own, then all the other forums that have happened over this time. Down the left-hand column, down the left-hand side, that's what we have heard from folks, that's important, that the kind of areas where they want and need to see value out of this project in their neighborhoods. Access to jobs, we've been talking about already, and we'll talk a lot more about that, as Doug said, and how we can really go feed the pipeline across the whole spectrum of the types of jobs that will be present in Aggie Square, both for construction and for ongoing youth exposure, youth engagement to new career pathways, key area that people identify that they want to see that kind of value. This is a huge one that you all are keenly aware of. Displacement and due to rising rents and the impacts that that can have as the project succeeds, and how that can be countered through co-investment at the same time. And really the dual strategy of affordable housing and opportunity training that we're all interested in delivering. And onward, traffic and transportation, the small business connections, and having a strong community voice. Again, I won't go deep on this. I just want you to see our framework. This framework, where we've asked ourselves across the university and across our partnership teams, we know construction is coming. There's gonna be a very strong community workforce training agreement. As we talked about very early on, is a priority for our communities and our city. That is going to happen during that middle period of construction. And then we are gonna do pilot projects during that period, so that when the doors open in the third column, that will have programs and job training that can be sustainable, continue to feed it, but we're also asking ourselves back to the first column, while we wait for Aggie Square, it's a big project that takes a long time. What can we do now to increase access and visibility and preparation for people to get good jobs, existing jobs at UC Davis, in particular at UC Davis Health? There are over 12,000 or 13,000 jobs at that campus right now. So we're working very hard with a lot of partners, see what we can do, their HR department and others, to really embrace working with local community members, local community-based organizations to increase access to existing jobs. So this is just our framework. What can we do now? What good things can we make happen during construction, and then how can we be ready when the doors open with sustainable programs?
Bob, can I add something really quickly? This is Jay.
Please, yes.
Just that tomorrow, in working with UC Davis and others, we're putting on job fairs. That'll be ongoing job fairs. We have our first one tomorrow. We have well over 140 folks signed up to come in with lots of employers, including UC Davis. So getting UC Davis out into the community to match up folks with these jobs is what we're really working on hard. Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, Councilmember Shenier. Okay, so then, again, lots of information. I won't go deep into it, but I just want to show you sort of some headlines here on each slide where this one's all about the workforce pipeline. We're using that framework. How can we create access to jobs now? As Councilmember Shenier mentioned, what can we do during the construction period, strong partnerships with the trades to deliver apprenticeships and local hiring targets as a part of the job, and then making programs sustainable with the Sustainable Workforce Development programs that can be fed by an ongoing community fund. So we'll just tick through the slides and show you these areas that we're working on. Affordable housing is one. Leslie is gonna say more about that coming up with an idea of how the tax revenues that will be generated by Aggie Square can create an identifiable and sustainable stream for affordable housing going forward. We keep going. Youth engagement, another very important area where, again, we're looking at how can we amplify some of the work the university already does? And then during the plan, the construction period, expand the planning for those. Again, our continuing professional education program is looking at very strongly investigating, ramping up their pre-collegiate programs to work with high-school-age kids on STEM programs and others. We keep going. And all this will be available, so I just don't want to take the time to read it, but I want to show you. It's all there. Access to space, we're gonna build, as Doug said, this new innovation space, open to entrepreneurs throughout the Sacramento community. We also have great public spaces and event space. It'll be open to community. Wexford makes a significant amount of that space available on a free or discounted basis to public and to community groups. So that's another value that the project creates. And then ongoing alignment. Wexford's talking about creating a community fund that comes from a surcharge on the rents, that will have local neighborhood representation and how that fund gets deployed once Aggie Square opens, again, to invest in priorities that the community has, as well as programs to connect directly with the adjacent Stockton Boulevard partnership and existing small businesses. So lots going on. Here's the last one, traffic and transportation. Some progress we've made already in partnership around the causeway connection, the electric buses, but also making sure we marry up to the Stockton Boulevard plans that are emerging out of city planning process. And we've heard a lot from our immediate neighborhoods about bicycle and pedestrian improvements we need to make on the campus that make the campus a safe route that you can get, where you can get off of the busy traffic on Stockton and Broadway. So we'll be working on that on kind of up close and personal planning as well. So I think that is the overview. The next steps are really to work hard on continuing to round out this community benefit menu and agreement with the City of Sacramento, Wexford, and UC Davis, continue to get input from the community, and really tie that to the upcoming work around the Infrastructure Financing District, so they move forward at the same time.
All right. Should we, Leslie, Ms. Fritchy, should we now go to the EIFD part, the next item?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor.
Before you do, I just also want to acknowledge the contribution, really very important contribution, of Assemblymember Kevin McCarty here, who championed several million-dollar state grant here to help launch this project, and it's very important to mention. Thank you.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you. The city's been asked to financially participate in the project with the formation of an Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, which would basically use the property tax or the possessor interest tax that is generated from the project itself. And you see the boundaries that are proposed on the right-hand side. Use those property taxes generated from the $1.1 billion project to be used for improvements within that area. The Phase 1 project is expected to include $1.1 billion, and the request from the city is to invest $30 million from the EIFD proceeds into those Phase 1 improvements. In addition to that, I would like to highlight something that is both a new and an old concept for staff, because we're asking the council to support a policy of using 20% of the funds that are generated by the EIFD for community benefit, and we're particularly targeting affordable housing. And we're particularly targeting affordable housing. So this is reminiscent of the set aside that was used and in place during the days of redevelopment. This new policy direction would provide an ongoing source for housing and other community benefits and assist in addressing some of the challenges that are felt by the community and in Sacramento as a whole, that of rising rent and housing costs. But these funds would initially be used to focus on both preservation and neighborhood housing stabilization, but also able to leverage other local and state funding for construction of new affordable housing. The project will also assist with the related part of that equation, which is income generation. As you've heard from Bob and Doug's presentation, there is significant job creation that is envisioned to be part and integral to the Phase One project at Aggie Square. 3,500 to 4,000 jobs will be created as part of Phase One. Currently, in the city of Sacramento, our wages have kind of been stagnant and maybe not necessarily on that growth trajectory that we would like to see. Aggie Square provides an opportunity for real job growth in our area as well as income that will rise as a result of the wages and the jobs created in part by Aggie Square. So the EIFD commitment before you today is to form this district to provide the funding for Phase One of the project, $30 million to be used for infrastructure within that particular project area. So I'll walk through very quickly kind of the EIFD process and steps that are dictated by statute. But this timeline that I'm about to outline is driven both by statute, but also the desire to get going on the project very quickly because the Westford and UC Davis's focus is increasing Aggie Square's competitive edge by being one of the first life sciences districts launched after the pandemic. So this timing that I'll walk through is both statutorily outlined as well as driven by a need to get going on the project to be very responsive to the competitive edge that we feel this project will have. So tonight, we have as an accompanying, a part of my presentation and the following items. It's a resolution of intention to form the EIFD and to establish the Public Financing Authority, which will serve as the oversight board and the financing mechanism for the EIFD. In addition, we will be opening, following, if the council's go approves tonight, we will be opening up a recruitment period for two public members to serve on the Public Finance Authority. So that period of time that that application is open will be approximately two weeks. In November and December, we will be continuing community conversations related to the community benefits. And I want to really underscore that the community benefits and that interface with the community is very important to us. So the first meeting of the Public Financing Authority is envisioned to occur on November the 18th. And then moving forward in December, or likely in the month of January, we'll return to council with a financing plan for the EIFD and a community benefit agreement. These are, in our minds, very tied together with one not happening, that the council approval tied to making sure that we have a community benefit agreement. And then over the months of January through April, there's statutory requirements for three public hearings of the Public Financing Authority with our goal of having the EIFD in place by the middle of April. So the next step, approve the resolution of intention tonight. We will continue to have ongoing conversations with the community regarding the community benefits and the agreement. On the application period, which I mentioned, for the PFA, public members will open up potentially tomorrow if we are able to secure your approval tonight. The first meeting of the PFA on November 18th, and the development of the financing plan, which will then return to council in the middle of January. So those are the next steps. That's an overview of what has been asked of the city to form an EIFD to contribute for Phase One, $30 million for the infrastructure. And then as part of that, carving out 20% of that EIFD proceeds for an ongoing affordable housing fund. So with that, I think our entire team is available for questions.
Leslie, could I ask you to just spend a couple of minutes on a potential of the second EIFD as well? I think it's important.
Oh, yes, yes, thank you very much. There is, the Westford group has provided or will, has made a commitment to provide up to $400,000 for the development of a second enhanced infrastructure financing district, which would be a section along the Stockton Boulevard corridor. And that $400,000 commitment would get us started with forming a second EIFD, which would correspond in timing with the efforts that the Planning and Community Development Group is doing related to the development of a Stockton Boulevard specific plan. So we would tie those two pieces together. We would do the planning work as part of the Stockton Boulevard specific plan and then have the EIFD available to implement some of those infrastructure improvements and other areas that are part of the Stockton Boulevard plan. So that timing is probably, the plan is underway now, but it is not envisioned to be finalized probably until the first part of 2022. So it's about a year process from now. But we would bring both pieces together and put a bow on it, hopefully in 2022. So thank you, council member Shanier. I should have mentioned that second opportunity.
Thank you, okay. Let us open it up now. We've got 20-plus members of the community who have comments, and I think we should hear from the public. And then we should open it up for council questions and discussion.
Mayor, could I ask just one quick clarifying question?
Yeah.
Leslie, a lot of people don't understand EIFD at all. A lot of probably our callers don't understand it. Can you explain just briefly how the tax is generated? I think a lot of people think that the contribution from the city would be existing tax money or general fund money. Can you just explain how the tax increment is generated?
Yes, thank you very much, Councilmember Harris. So an enhanced infrastructure financing district simply works this way, where you basically draw a boundary around a certain area, and then the tax growth that is done, that occurs within that area is used to fund improvements in infrastructure within that area. So it's not taking money from the existing general fund. It is totally based on an increase in property tax value from projects that are developed within that area. So in this instance, if nothing happens, there would be no property tax increase, and we wouldn't have money to plow back into these infrastructure improvements in Aggie Square. But their project is estimated to be a $1.1 billion project. And so what we're talking about here is using the property tax that is generated from those improvements for, to basically stimulate and catalyze development within that area.
Thank you, Leslie. That's the point I wanted you to make, is that the project itself creates the tax value to put in the infrastructure to support the project. So we lose nothing by instituting this EIFD.
No, this is truly value-added. If the project couldn't go forward, there would be no property tax increment or generation there. But by catalyzing it with an EIFD, we're able to stimulate approximately $1.1 billion of investment.
Thank you, Leslie. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, okay. Let us begin the public testimony, please.
Thank you, may I have my first caller, please? And for the record, we have 23 callers. Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council. My name is Glenn Snyder, and I'm a member of the sheet metal workers Local 104. I support items eight and nine because Aggie Square development will create and ensure local construction workers will be working on this project and receiving prevailing wages and benefits. I also support items eight and nine because it continues the creation of career pathway opportunities for the local community. I ask your vote for support, thank you.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Hi, my name is Robbie Anceloni, District Six. I've been a resident of the city of Sacramento for 33 years. I'm a graduate of Sac City College. And I'm calling to support the UCD Aggie Square project. Benefit to the community from what I've seen, these types of projects are simply amazing. From the small businesses to the good-paying jobs, the economic boost is a catalyst improving communities and the community around us. Remember the area 30 years ago. And from then to now, the improvements are just spectacular, they really are. We really need these types of projects and the other construction projects as well to keep Sacramento and our immediate communities moving forward. And that's all I had to say, thank you very much.
Thank you for comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Great. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and members of the council. My name is Zach Krill, and I am here today representing over 4,500 workers of UC Davis employees. I'm from Local 3299, represent both patient care and service employees that provide the technical care, clean hospital beds, restrooms, labs, and classrooms, as well as maintain the ground all around UC Davis, including here in Sacramento. I'm here because we are concerned. We understand that UC Davis will employ some other workers who will maintain the facilities at Aggie Square, but not all of them. In fact, UC Davis has made it clear to us that the developer, Westford, will be in charge of the employment relations for many of the jobs created, including workers who will work, clean, and maintain the development project. In other words, there will be a two-tiered workforce providing service work to the project. The first class of workers will include service workers directly employed by the university. These workers will earn a living wage, have access to healthcare and retirement benefits. In other words, they will be able to provide middle-class stability to their families. The other class of workers will not be employed by the university's health plan, will not have access to the same wage and benefit levels as UC employees. They will likely be making minimum wage and have no employer provided a form of healthcare or retirement benefits. This is wrong. The city of Sacramento should not enable this project to go forward without the commitment from UC Davis to directly employ those workers who maintain the buildings on their own land. Without that commitment, the city of Sacramento should not provide tax increment financing for the infrastructure of Aggie Square. Sacramento residents should not have to subsidize Westford and UC Davis in providing low-wage jobs, Oak Park residents and DMAs. Surely both Westford and UC Davis can be better for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, honorary city council members and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Tom Ayton, and I have been a homeowner in District Six for 21 years and a member of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local 447 for 26 years. I am calling in tonight to support agenda items eight and nine for the UC Davis Aggie Square project. These types of projects not only provide benefit to the local community and businesses, they also foster career pathways for some of the local areas disadvantaged youth. Please consider supporting these agenda items for the betterment of the local community surrounding the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and respected city council members. My name is Doyle Radford Jr., and I am the Business Manager for Construction and General Labor's Local 185. Our office is located at 1320 National Drive, and that is in District One. It is my honor and privilege to represent roughly 5,000 of the hardest-working men and women in the construction industry. Around 1,400 of those men and women happen to be apprentices. I'm calling tonight to voice our support for items number eight and nine. The Aggie Square project is a big win for our local members who reside in Oak Park, Tahoe Park, and surrounding communities, many of whom have been traveling to the Bay Area and outside of the Sacramento area for work. Our local also supports this item because it opens up career pathways for local communities within our proud local union, as well as other respected building trade unions. I thank you all for your time tonight and your consideration, I'm voting yes for this item.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Okay, thank you, I'll make it quick. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Jesse Thane, I'm a member of Operating Engineers, and I support items eight and nine. I ask for your voted support, thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Jesse Greer, and I'm a member of the Operating Engineers Local Union Three. I support items eight and nine because the Aggie Square development will create and ensure local construction workers will be working and receiving prevailing wages and benefits. I also support items eight and nine because it continues career pathway opportunities for the local community. I ask for your vote of support, thank you.
Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Mayor, and members of the city council. Brandon Black, Director of Public Policy, Sacramento Metro Chamber, appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening. As the voice of business in the capital region, we strongly support items eight and nine. Aggie Square aligns with our promise of creating a vibrant community, a ready workforce, a connected region, and strong businesses. The project creates a catalyst for innovation and growth in Sacramento. This project, along with the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, will be critical to our economic recovery as we navigate a post-COVID-19 world. It positions Sacramento as a global leader in life sciences, generating up to $5 billion in economic activity annually and supporting up to 25,000 ongoing jobs. We also thank UC Davis for their continued commitment to the existing neighborhood and neighbors. The project serves as a pathway to economic resiliency and inclusive growth by partnering with the community to create opportunities for high-wage jobs in communities of color and supporting the need for increased housing production. We appreciate the commitment to continued community involvement and dialogue with surrounding neighborhoods. We urge your support of this project tonight. Thank you as always for your time.
Thank you.
Next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and fellow city council members. Pat Fontcushira, President and CEO of the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce. I am here to voice our chamber's support of the proposal to adopt a resolution of intent to establish the Aggie Square Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. The chamber understands that the ROI to establish this financing district is an important tool to fund capital investment and public infrastructure facilities. We also understand that Westford, UC Davis, and the city have made a commitment to the surrounding community to provide pathway opportunities for workforce and small business participation in an innovative economy. We look forward to working closely with Westford, UC Davis, and city staff to ensure that a full, representative, and equitable community benefit agreement is agreed upon prior to the council taking final action. A strong and generous community benefit agreement is critical to supporting our neighborhoods. Projects like Aggie Square must not only engage with the residents of the surrounding communities, but must also include them in the economic prosperity and employment opportunities created by this project. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you for your comments, next caller, please? Welcome to the meeting, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you, my name is John Rector, and I'm with Operating Engineers Local Three, and I'm calling-
and I'm calling to encourage a yes vote on Items Eight and Nine. Operating Engineers represent over forty thousand workers in the state of California, Nevada, Utah, and Hawaii, with many of those people being here locally and apprentice-trained individuals. This this project will bring many good-paying jobs to the area and encourage, you know, use of apprenticeship and and really help bolster our economy during these crazy times. For those reasons and many others, we encourage a yes vote on Eight and Nine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, members of the Sacramento City Council. I, Andrew Davy, am a twenty-seven-year member of Plumbers and Pipe Fitters Local Four-four-seven. I am calling in tonight to support Agenda Items Eight and Nine for the UC Davis Aggie Square project. These types of projects not only provide benefits to the local community and businesses, they also foster career pathways for some of the areas disadvantaged youth. Please consider supporting these agenda items for the betterment of the local community surrounding the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, members of the city council, city manager, and Mayor Steinberg. My name is Herman Barahona, community organizer with United Latinos. United Latinos is an active member of Sacramento Investment Without Displacement, a broad coalition of community activists, union members, churches, nonprofits, and neighborhood associations, demanding that UC Davis Aggie Square project allow Sacramento Investment Without Displacement to be a cosignator on the community benefits agreement. I'm here to speak on their behalf. A Sacramento Bee headline today read that Sacramento is considering this tax break, the EISD, for the UC Davis project. And we believe that it's very important that it's accompanied by this community benefits agreement in which we ask that we are a cosignator to this project. We are glad that there is a twenty percent affordable housing delineation included in this proposed EISD, but we have learned from past experiences that we need better mechanisms to honor such commitments. We look to you to support the health and well-being of our residents by having the city council stand firm to the CBA that's executed along with Sacramento Investment Without Displacement and UC Davis. With over five thousand new employees and students coming to Aggie Square in this first phase of the development, and possibly more people in subsequent phases, we know that it's a great opportunity, a great economic opportunity for Sacramento. But housing costs and environmental issues will escalate and gentrification will intensify. In today's California, we know that devastating housing discrimination is hidden within the so-called market forces disguised as progress. We ask that you honor the memory of Nathaniel Collins, all your great leaders.
Will you make your final comment, please?
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you.
You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. My name is Robert Cooks, and I'm a member of the Sheet Metal Workers Union Local One-oh-four. I'm calling in support of Items Eight and Nine because the Aggie Square development will create and ensure local construction workers will be working and receiving prevailing wages and benefits. I also support Items Eight and Nine because it continues career pathway opportunities for the local community. It's going to provide well-paying jobs for hard-working construction workers and allow them to stay close to home, to spend more time with their families, which I consider crucial, being as that I have three children and, you know, I care for them a lot and enjoy my family time. So I would really appreciate your support in voting yes on Items Eight and Nine. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, everyone. This is Rose Cabral from District Six, also a UC Davis alumni. Go Ag! So I wanted to point out, investments into business are necessary, but we also must pay attention to who benefits and who's left behind. I think that's kind of a theme I've been seeing from this meeting, right? Who is going to be left behind? So in April of twenty eighteen, two and a half years ago, the city and UC Davis promised that neighborhoods would be included in decisions impacting our neighborhoods. Household member Shanir said that it can be either a very great thing for the neighborhoods or a very negative thing for the neighborhoods. So neighborhoods need to be included in these discussions. Just last Thursday, there was a last-minute meeting held prior to this meeting during the presidential debate. Neighbors were talked at instead of listened to, and I haven't been seeing the meaningful engagement with neighbors. I first heard the term EISD eight days ago, and I've been trying to figure out what that means. It's a very complex tool that was created five years ago. We haven't really had very many examples of it here in Sacramento. If UC Davis and the city are willing to sign on to an EISD, then I would like a written commitment to myself and my neighbors through a community benefits agreement that's formed with community members. You cannot create a community benefits agreement without including the community. Neighbors need a seat at the table where all of these decisions regarding Aggie Square are being made. If you want this project to be successful, you need people in the neighborhoods to help form a thoughtful, inclusive project that lifts up all of our neighbors. We need to ensure that neighbors can hold both UC Davis and the city accountable now and in the future once we are all gone out of this city council and once everyone's different. We must not rush.
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
We need a community benefits agreement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and council members. My name is Mario Cardoza with Operating Engineers Local Three, and I am in support of Items Eight and Nine because it will bring good jobs with good benefits for local workers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Jim Baldrige, Operating Engineers Local Three. I'm calling in support of Items Number Eight and Nine because it will provide good jobs and benefits to our workers. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, council. My name is Adro, and I'm the Policy Director for the Sacramento Housing Alliance. I'm a member of the Sacramento Investment Without Displacement Coalition, and we want to express our support for the statements of our coalition partners, as Herman was just beginning to explain, and show the urgency of the widespread displacement Aggie Square is expected to cause, and affirm the need of substantial mitigation to provide affordable housing for individuals and families who receive a low income who currently live in the surrounding area. We are requesting for a community-driven community benefits agreement where a community member is a signatory as modeled in community benefits agreements across the nation. In addition, we are requesting a public member who has been actively engaged in mitigating displacement to be considered reviewing applications for the Public Finance Authority Board that will govern the implementation of the EISD to help to ensure that the community truly benefits from the investment of public funds. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. My name is Jackie Cole, and I hope that my comments aren't redundant. Unfortunately, I wasn't able to watch the meeting. But my primary comments are just that it's been a little disappointing that we haven't been able to see the community benefits agreement or the recommendations that came out of the Sacramento Investment Without Displacement group. And I understand that you guys are in conversation, but that we still haven't been able to see that reflected as a part of this process. And all we're asking for is that you show us how you're going to address the community concerns that have been identified. And providing a city tax break for UC Davis, you know, we already know that housing is an issue and that this particular process and project runs the real risk of just accelerating gentrification within that community. And this is another large-scale development project that, you know, we're all watching as a community. And we're looking for something different. We're looking for something to change, you know, as a part of this process. And last thing I'll say about it is, you know, development at the expense of the community cannot be how we continue to build in Sacramento. And providing a tax break for a developer at the expense of community express priority is shameful. So I'm looking forward to hearing more about this this project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and fellow councilors. My name is David Vincent. I reside in Council District Five, and I'm a member of Sheet Metal Workers Local One-oh-four. I applaud the council's unanimous approval of Agenda Item Six earlier this evening. I heard a councilor mention that it was, quote, "the first step towards changing systems and culture within the city." I similarly believe that Agenda Items Eight and Nine on the agenda this evening provide a similarly ambitious step forward for the labor movement within the city. These items will create good, middle-class jobs and ensure local workers are paid prevailing wages and benefits. I support your time. I appreciate your time and consideration, and thank you for your vote of support.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Steinberg and city council members. I'm Kevin Ferreira, the Executive Director of the Sacramento Sierras Building and Construction Trades Council. And we strongly support Aggie Square at USD Items Eight and Nine. The Building Trades Council is a performance-based organization providing contractors with the highest skilled and trained workforce in the construction industry, representing over sixteen thousand union construction workers in the Sacramento region. UC Davis, Wexford Science and Technology, and Wakefield Bushman have pledged to work with us to build Aggie Square. This will ensure that the project is held to the highest possible standards. This also will improve the lives of hundreds of skilled construction workers. Furthermore, Aggie Square will be home to some of the most innovative and comprehensive workforce training programs. UC Davis is working closely with the city of Sacramento, Los Rios Community College, California State Sacramento, to help develop programs that provide skills workers will need for the future. Some of those programs will give workers the skills they need to fill the jobs at Aggie Square. We ask for your strong support for this worthwhile endeavor. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello. Congratulations, Mayor Steinberg, City Council. My name is Barry Broome. I'm the President of the Greater Sacramento Economic Council. I live in District Four in Midtown. We are calling in support of the infrastructure project with Aggie Square. As we know, UC Davis is now one of the top ten or eleven universities in the United States for research, approaching one billion dollars. Our community's been hard-hit by COVID. Aggie Square is going to build an important tax base for SAC Unified Schools. I was very grateful to see all of the labor support tonight. So the developer, Wexford, understands our community. We certainly support the community benefits concept and will support the neighborhoods being at the table. It's a really important scientific achievement. One of the things that's lost on this is the cell therapeutic and gene editing going on at Aggie Square will change public health for Sacramento residents and residents across the United States and the world. It's going to be an important opportunity for us to capture our college graduates. And we're very excited. We think this is going to be a legacy project for our city and something we're going to be proud of for generations. So we're grateful to Chancellor May, Wexford, and we applaud the mayor and city council and city manager's leadership in getting this project to this level. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. This is Fabrizio Sasso with the Sacramento Central Labor Council. We represent a lot of the construction workers that have called in this evening, as well as workers that operate at the UC Davis Medical Center. We are glad that UC and Wexford are working with our trades to ensure that high-road, high-quality construction jobs are going to be provided in the build-out of Aggie Square. However, as you heard earlier this evening from our brother Zach Friels from AFME Thirty-two ninety-nine, who represent workers currently at the UC campus, there is no guarantee that that will be extended to workers who on the operation side. And so we want to thank Councilmember Shanir Engera and Mayor Steinberg for meeting with us with the Sacramento Investment Without Displacement, which the Sacramento Central Labor Council is a proud member of, and keep encouraging these conversations and ensure that the community is at the table and signatory to a community benefits agreement moving forward. Thank you very much, and have a good evening.
Thank you, Fabrizio. All right, that is the public testimony, and thank you, everyone, for participating tonight. Again, it's not the last opportunity. It's this EIFD, and the entire project is going to come before the council in a number of different stages. Let's turn it over to my colleagues, and I want to first turn it over to councilmembers Geta and Shanir, whose districts this belongs in, and they are doing an exemplary job of representing the community and rightfully insisting that the community benefits be tangible and real. So I'll turn it over to them for comments. Who's first?
Mr. Mayor, I think I'm going to take the first shot at here. And first, I want to thank also Councilmember Shanir. We've both committed to be working together jointly on this to make sure that we're all in unison with both communities in both council districts as we move forward. And I'd like to start with my appreciation to my neighbors and community members for the conversation we've had recently and over the past two years. I live in Tahoe Park, you know, live adjacent to the area. And my family, my mother and my brother and sister, all live in the area as well. And I've had many of my neighbors who live around the UCD campus reach out, and I'd like to thank them for their engagement. You know, thank you for continuing to do that. I know some of you have reached out to me tonight as the meeting's been going on, and I appreciate it. This project has many, many potential positive impacts for our city, even our region, and especially when it comes to what's most important to me, which is the local employment. But much as we have seen with the explosion of the tech jobs in the Bay, it also causes me concern that displacement is one of those issues that can come if it's not addressed. So if the project does not focus on supporting hiring and investing in the surrounding neighborhoods and hitting those key things, issues of housing, I think we have a challenge with that. A lot of positives, but we have to hit those challenges. I know firsthand what the power of science and technology fields can do to families who are struggling. I mean, within less than one generation, my family went from farmworkers living in poverty just across the river to sitting here today. And from then on, my younger cousins have benefited from the opportunities that I had because of that. And I was part of a cohort of kids who lived in migrant camps, also on reservations, and in disadvantaged communities in our own cities who were exposed to science through intentional efforts by community leaders. And I want to see that here. I want to see it. I want to see it for our neighborhood kids and their parents. We must be intentional in ensuring that there's an enforceable commitment to this success by the university, the developer and, and, and the city. And tonight's action is the first step and intention to do just that. We are voting only on a resolution of intent, and that's clearly from the agenda. But as we move forward, I'm committed to ensuring that the necessary opportunity and protections are in place for the neighborhood. This action tonight is only the first step and there will be many more conversations and actions that, that we must do to move forward on this path. And as I said, and I will continue to say, I'm committed to focus on our neighborhoods and their needs in these discussions, being very clear and discreet about them. Now, if we're going to execute this project, there must be a commitment to families and the workers that the university and the developer that this project will commit to for good-paying jobs, the local community, but to also include those medical benefits and retirement benefits. I think the university and the project must ensure, as we mentioned earlier, that there's labor peace. And as mentioned by, in the public comment, are, are many neighbors of mine who are members of Local Two, Local 3299, let's do right by the service workers. We can have those local good jobs here. We're starting tomorrow morning by having a job fair here on the, in the neighborhood to making sure that we start that immediately. The university and the project, I also think the developer must commit to an equity hiring strategy. I've heard that on, over and over again. The, the funds developed by the success of this project must support also the creation of more affordable housing. Assemblymember McCarthy, I think, outlined it very clearly in his letter, like the interest of, of making sure that that is a also top priority. I've heard it from the Sacramento Housing Alliance, United Latinos, Sacramento Act, and we should commit to that. This is why exploring this financial tool is important. This is just one tool that ensures that the future revenue gains stay in and invest in the neighborhood. And frankly, without this tool, there may not be any new jobs and there may not be any new revenue for the neighborhood. And if somehow this project proceeds without the EIFD tool, then the property tax revenue would all go exclusively into the general fund and, and neighborhood investments would have to compete against other city obligation and resources. So the unique tool about this is that it keeps the investment in the neighborhood. And we must continue to explore that. And thank you, Leslie, for bringing up the Phase Two of Stockton Boulevard EIFD, which would be a four-mile stretch that could keep money in the revenue. This is just a quarter mile stretch that we're talking about tonight. The real gains is the full phase of the, the efforts that we're doing. I say, I say, let's keep the money local, let's keep it in the neighborhood and keep the neighborhood strong. Our task is to work directly with the families in the neighborhood to get it right and ensure that we deliver on that promise. You know, I've heard from Marcia Johnston from West Tahoe Park, who is committed to making sure that, you know, we protect the quality of life in our neighborhoods. I heard from Sean from the Fairgrounds Neighborhood, who lives adjacent to the property, who is interested in closer local jobs. And reminded us that right now there are vacant lots across the project property that are doing nothing to progress the needs that we have. I want to thank Ron Jimenez also from United Latinos, who has been very forefront about advocating the, to say, look, families could benefit from this, not only for those that are unemployed, but many that are underemployed. And, and that is a key thing, many who are underemployed. And he continues to, to exercise that point of getting the equity hiring right for those local folks. Jobs at the current health system, the construction of the project, and the future jobs. Raising the income of our neighbors must be principle. Do also want to thank the comments that came in from Steve Dobbs from Mercy Housing. Mercy Housing has been building affordable housing and they've built housing on Stockton Boulevard for many of our, our families and individuals in need and has registered their support for this tool because it allows us for a match that is new and gives us a competitive edge at the state and federal level. And again, you know, this morning, I just want to thank Christina Mora, who used to be, for a long time, the Director of the Mesa Program Engineering and Science. We talked about how critical it is that part of, as we move forward, is a pathway for our kids to be able to move forward. She talked about a good idea that scholarships from the local kids around Aggie Square should have reference and be accepted at UC Davis or create some kind of higher education pipeline. Those are all needed conversations that we need to have. This is just the first step to make these neighborhood investments through the community benefits agreement a reality. And there are many more months of conversations and discussions to make sure we get it right and hold all parties accountable. And I'm committed to making sure Aggie Square delivers on that promise, that our city delivers on that promise, and the local neighborhoods not only aren't negatively impacted, but thrive. So I'm, I think this is a strong opportunity for us, one that we must be diligently involved with the neighborhood and commit to a community benefits agreement that's going to help improve the neighborhood. And with that, Mr. Mayor, be glad to move the intent, the resolution of intent for the project.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Getta. Again, and thank you to Councilmember Shanir. I'm turning it over to you now.
Great. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Gary, you covered a lot of ground and I'm going to try to, excuse me, I know we've been doing this since one o'clock this afternoon, so I'm going to try to not repeat what, what you said. But I do want to provide a little bit of context as I see it and, and answer a few of the things that we heard both tonight and when we met with Investment Without Displacement Group. Number one, if, if we think about what the university and Stockton Boulevard looks like today, university is more or less a world unto itself. I think that they would admit that and, and that's how many UCs operate. And then Stockton Boulevard is, is not a place that is booming. Let's put it that way. We have a hundred vacant lots between the university and Fruit Ridge. We have been working, Councilmember Gary and I, for the last couple of years together, trying to catalyze development there, which has been very difficult, and trying to bring city initiatives to the Boulevard. So we have a complete streets program going on. We're working with RT around transportation. We have Vision Zero there as well. So there's a lot of things happening, but what we, what we do need is a huge catalyst. And we believe that Aggie Square can be that catalyst to really bring a renaissance to the neighborhood. Rose Cabral said that, something I said early on, is that this could be the best thing that happens to these neighborhoods or the worst thing. I still believe that, but I think we're on track to make it the best thing. And the only way we do that is by working together with the neighborhoods. If, as this happens, and I, and I see that there are really four partners in this. Certainly UC Davis, Wexford as the developer, the City of Sacramento, and then the community. And again, we either do this together or we're not successful. As Aggie Square comes in with a design that is open to the community, and I know that there are steps to go on that as well, what that brings is jobs. What that brings is community spaces. I think what that brings is development that will happen, hopefully, commercial development as well as residential along the Boulevard, all the way going south and east. That can change what we have there. And the second EIFD, as, as Eric talked about, a hundred percent of those dollars stay in the neighborhood for affordable housing, for workforce development, that we're committed to working with the neighborhoods to figure out what the boundaries of that EIFD should be, as well as what the, the uses of the money that's generated by the EFD, EIFD should be as well. So this could be anywhere from two to four thousand jobs. You've heard some different numbers today. We want to ensure that those jobs are able to be filled by folks from the neighborhood. So let me talk about a couple of specifics and some things that we heard tonight. One is the community benefit agreement and the desire by the IWD and folks in the neighborhood to be a signatory. We have said, and I'm going to speak, Eric, tell me if I'm not speaking for you, I'll just keep going. But what we have said is that we think we can work something out on that. We're open to that discussion. And I actually would like to ask our, our attorney, Susanna, to see what are the pluses and minuses of doing that? Are there any legal ramifications if they do that? So that's something that we, we need to get back. But I think that's certainly open for discussion. And what's important to me, and I said this in our meeting the other day, is it's good that we all can sign, but what's important is enforcing it and holding people accountable so that it's, it's followed through on. So that's what the, the important thing on that. You know, the, the tax break, I think it's an unfortunate choice of words. I've learned in, in eighteen years of being an elected official that you can never control the headlines of a newspaper. And so that's not something I would ever try anymore. But the, the, I think it's important to note again that the funds generated in the EIFD come from the development. So basically, when UC Davis leases land or leases space, those are the funds that come out as a form of property tax. It's, it's actually possessory interest tax, but as possessory interest tax, those are the funds that go into the EIFD. So really, we're regenerating the same funds back into the project for a period of time. At some point, the thirty million will be paid off. We won't have to do that and a hundred percent will come into the project. That's a long way off. I don't think that that is really something we can count on today. I mean, we can count on it, but it's so far away, it's not going to help us today. But really, what we want to do is make sure that we have money to layer into affordable housing as we go. If there's no EIFD to fill the gap on funding for a billion-dollar project, this is thirty million dollars worth, then there's no revenue generated. And then, so it, it, it will get into a circle of no EIFD, no, no revenue, nothing that happens for the neighborhood, no jobs, no renaissance of the neighborhood. So we need to make that happen. And I understand and agree with the community that we've heard, that we need to, that there will be significant impacts of the neighborhood and we have to mitigate those impacts. What, what we have committed to, which I think is important, and this is at the, the meeting last Thursday, that I understand it was at the same time as the presidential debate. I apologize about that. But what we did at that meeting was we talked a little bit about the EIFD. Leslie Fritsch did an eight-minute presentation. Bob Seeger talked probably for five to seven minutes about what the project entailed, just for those who, we had about sixty people come to that town hall meeting. And, and the rest was Q and A. So I do say, I, I do think that we listened and then there have been follow-up meetings. Here, here are the two things that we've asked the community to do. If the thirty meetings or so in the neighborhood meetings are not sufficient around community engagement, and we'll be the first to admit that we can always do better around community engagement, we've asked Investment Without Displacement to tell us what they want. Councilmember Gary and I have committed to a town hall in November, a town hall in December, and a town hall in January prior to any council meeting, but we're more than willing to do more. We're more than willing to do it in various languages. We've asked, again, the community to say, what is it that you need from us so that we can walk away saying, we've done this together and we've had an adequate amount of community engagement? We also want to be really clear around the community benefit agreement. They have sent us a letter, all good things. There's thirteen items on it, but we need to work through what the priorities are. There's a finite amount of, of things that we can get here, a finite amount of resources. So having, having priorities set for what the, out of those thirteen items is going to be important so that we can work with the community to make sure we get what's most important there. And we, we've asked to continue meeting with them. Again, we want this to be, we have the same goals, I think. And so we need to work with the community to listen. And, and Councilmember Gary and I have also made a commitment that we will not vote on an EIFD or not vote for an EIFD without an accompanying community benefit agreement. So there will be a community benefit agreement. If not, we, I certainly, for myself, and I think I can talk from Eric on this one, we will not vote for the EIFD to go forward. So that's where, where we are. That's where I am. Again, we want this to be a fabulous project. We want it to benefit the neighborhood. We have, right now, four or five affordable housing or workforce housing projects going on on the Boulevard, but we really need to catalyze a lot more. Aggie Square can be the development that does that catalyzing. So we need to work together to make that happen and working then with UC Davis and with Wexford so it becomes a win all around. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Shanir. Councilman Hanson, then I want to make a couple of final comments, then we're going to vote.
Thanks, Mayor. I want to first congratulate my colleagues, Jay and Eric, for all of the deep and hard work they've done. I think I first heard about this project, though, from you, Mayor, and Barry Broome.
Yeah.
Kind of a dream to drag UC Davis somewhat across the causeway and really have them amplify UC Davis Medical Center. Well, I know a lot of tonight is about the building project and the EFD. I, I don't know if Bob is still listening, but on his first slide of the, with the four principles, I don't know if you can put that up, Bob?
And maybe Leslie, maybe she can put them back up.
And Leslie's, I don't know how she does everything she does. She's like fifteen people in one.
While Steve is waiting, I want to make sure that I second Eric's motion.
The reason I wanted this brought up with those principles is I spent eight years working at Genentech, which was, which is one of the largest biotech companies in the world now, but it spun off from a UCSF professor who figured out how to do recombinant DNA and ultimately created humanized insulin and monoclonal antibodies. But in this photo, there's a woman at the back. And I don't know if any of you know her. She passed earlier this year. Her name is Eve Grossman Bukowski. And I'm guessing that she was added to this photo because she was a long-term survivor of colon cancer. Eve found out, she was a dear friend of mine, she died in April of this year at about fifty-three, fifty-four, two twin girls who just graduating from high school. But in January two thousand and eight, she found out she had stage four colon cancer. She was supposed to die in six months. She has these twin girls who are under ten and she had to figure out how to fight to live. And because of a lot of the innovative therapeutics and breakthroughs in treatment at UC Davis, at Stanford, she ended up with Steve Jobs oncologist at one point. She lived twelve more years. The cancer had a horrible effect on her body and ultimately, after so many surgeries and other things, she didn't, she, she couldn't, she could no longer go on. But the power of this Aggie Square campus is as much about the economic development opportunity as, as it is about the opportunity to transform lives. And in an era where science has been rejected, where many people doubt the safety of vaccines, we have in our midst a world-class institution in UC Davis, whose scientists like Ernie Bodai and others can help create the cures and the therapies for the tens of millions of Eves out there with pre-existing conditions or cancer, genetic diseases, et cetera. And so tonight, I, I know that that's not really the focus, but that is the promise of this campus, to save lives, to improve the health of the community. And we certainly have to resolve the gentrification and displacement issues. But I couldn't let the moment pass to tell Eve's story. She got to see her girls graduate from high school and she got to celebrate many more birthdays and she got to make a great difference in the world. So that's, that's why I think Aggie Square is an essential piece of Sacramento's future.
Thank you very much, Steve. Final comments, if I may. I really appreciate your, was it, were there others that wanted to speak? I'm sorry.
Jeff wants to speak.
Mayor, Vice Mayor here.
Go ahead, Jeff.
Thank you. Hours late. I will keep it short. Look, I, I really appreciate what Jay and Eric are going through here. I'm the Chair of the PFA for the EIFD for the rail yards development. The difference there is that I don't have a constituency with angst to worry about what this tax increment financing tool can actually achieve. But the EIFD does not create risk for the city and I think people need to fully understand that. The EIFD will allow this project to go forward. The EIFD will allow this project to go forward. Without it, it won't go forward, and the $30 million that we're talking about will never be generated. This is not a risk to the city. It's an investment by the city, in the city, and particularly in this neighborhood, in these neighborhoods, Oak Park and Tahoe Park. This is a very substantial project that can have tremendous benefits for the entire city and the local neighborhoods. The EIFD is a very clever tax increment financing tool that more or less replaces redevelopment money. And this is something that will benefit, I think, the entire city of Sacramento. It's a good project. It's well-conceived. I understand there's angst in the community. I believe that the two council members' promises to work with the communities are real, and I think we should move forward with this Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District. It's a great tool, and we should express it. It's going to work in the rail yards. It will work at Aggie Square. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Vice Mayor Harris. Let me just make a couple of final comments. You know, I just want to say, as Mayor, I too represent Districts 5 and 6. These are my districts, too. And of course, I used to represent District 6 on the City Council. As Mayor of this city, I don't want to lose the fact that this project, and it is more than a project, this initiative has tremendous citywide benefit as well. Part of the great debate in our city now, it's being played out in a number of different ways, is whether or not we should have intentional funding strategies around workforce development, around affordable housing. And of course, my answer, and I know your answer, is that yes, we should, and yes, we must. But workforce training and workforce development has much less meaning if it isn't accompanied by new industries and new jobs and high-paying jobs. And we simply do not have enough of that in the city of Sacramento. Why did we celebrate Centene so loudly? Because it was the first corporate headquarters of a major Fortune 500 company that we were able to attract here. We need so much more than that. And so this is a signature-wide city opportunity. And our inclusive economic development strategies and our commitments will be much less meaningful unless it's accompanied by economic development itself. But I want to reassure my constituents of District 5 and District 6 of a couple of things as well. Number one, there must be and should be public, a community representation on the Public Finance Authority Board. And I'm going to look to Councilmembers Chenier and Garrett for guidance to ensure that some of the most important voices to hold us accountable are part of that governance structure. Secondly, I strongly support this push for a Community Benefits Agreement so that we can actually formalize and quantify to the degree possible the commitment to make sure that the adjoining neighborhoods and the communities benefit from this project. Last point I want to make is that it would be too, it would be too easy, I think, to put too much pressure, if you will, on a single EIFD. We can't forget that we have to follow through on our promise of a year and two years ago to create a citywide affordable housing trust fund of at least $100 million. Because the EIFD will be one tool, but a citywide housing trust fund where we can make Stockton Boulevard and Aggie Square in the southeast area and the other parts of our city our signature focus to provide the antidote to gentrification. That is going to be an essential part of making the Aggie Square project be the great success that we all know it will be. This must not be either-or. It's not either or economic development and new jobs or benefiting the neighborhoods. They must go together. That's the whole agenda in our growing city. And yes, we struggle within, and yes, there are fits and starts. Here's a great chance to put it all together. I urge a strong "I" vote. Let's call the roll, please.
Mayor Pro-Tam Ashby.
Okay, strong "I."
Thank you.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harris.
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson.
Enthusiastic "aye."
Councilmember Chenier.
E5 "aye."
Councilmember Garrett.
Aye.
Councilmember Jennings. Councilmember Jennings, you're muted.
I read lips, he said "aye."
He's an "aye," thumbs up.
An "aye." Councilmember Carr.
Long last "aye."
Mayor Steinberg.
Aye.
That's unanimous, great start. A lot more work to do. Thank you to everybody. That is the end of the formal agenda. Is there public testimony on items not on the agenda, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I have four callers, and I'd like to read some board and commission appointments into the record.
Why don't you do that now before we do the public testimony, please?
Thank you. To the Aggie Square Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District, the EFID that we just created, Councilmember Eric Garrett, Councilmember Rick Jennings, and Councilmember Jay Chenier. Would you like the public comment callers now?
Yes, please.
Thank you, first caller, please.
You know what? I'm sorry, before we do that, can we explain that there will be public members as well besides the council people on the PFA? So I don't want people to think, there are three slots for council members, but there will be public members as well.
That's right, to be appointed in a subsequent meeting.
That's correct. Ms. Fritsch outlined that in her presentation, and that recruitment will open tomorrow.
Yes, let's get to the public testimony, please.
First caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
This is Bonnie Sue Eisner. I just wanted to say that I have a real concern about the safety of the homeless people and their cars, especially since several of them have been blowing up, catching fire. And I'd also like to say that, you know, I've worked really hard at trying to protect the rights, human rights, civil rights regarding the homeless, clean place to go to the bathroom, somewhere to charge their phone. Instead, you know, they just follow through with giving tickets. I've had a medical emergency situation going on for several weeks, and I've been really busy trying to, you know, search and pay up on bogus traffic tickets, which I've never had before, it was in my car. And then illegally towing my car, almost illegally towing it again. Cops telling the tow company that this person's never getting their car back. The tow company or the police stealing several items out of there. So I just, you know, I'm concerned about the safety of the homeless at this point because there doesn't seem to be any. There's a video of two cars that were on fire. No police came, just the fire department came to put it out. Another person was shot in the alley. So I'm just wondering what you guys are going to do to help my situation and the homeless feel safe because police aren't there to protect them? And who is going to protect them? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you very much. To the Mayor and the City Council, as an Aggie, I am glad to hear what you guys are doing on Item 7 and 8 and 9. One thing that I would like to see is a commitment to the youth having an opportunity to build in the Aggie Square, having a journeyman apprentice program for the youth develop. That would be a good thing. Also, I would like to see you do some type of zoning to protect the Sacramentans around the Aggie Square to avoid gentrification, i.e. having the Sacramentans have some protections ahead of those who will be moving into the area from out of state, out of city, because you're going to be attracting new monies into the Sacramento area, and that will automatically push some of those out who are actually living here now. The last thing I would like to see is a SPA kind of zoning perimeter where you're protecting Sacramentans so that we are not going to be subject to those who are bringing in dollars to benefit the city. So again, I'm glad to see development coming into the area, but I also want to make sure that we have some protections that gentrification does not happen.
Thank you for your comments. Next caller, please. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council. Welcome to the meeting. You have two minutes to address the council.
Hello, yes, this is Lambert of To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes. As we build momentum to go into the 2020 holidays, we're still pursuing funding from City Hall, $89 million there. And we have not been notified if we're going to be funded. So I wanted to emphasize that. I also wanted to say thank you to City Councilman Garrett and City Councilman Carr. Their staff reached out to us recently and bought some cheesecakes. And I see they're alive and well as I look at this broadcast. So that's just another example of we're ready to go. We have people that we're ready to hire in Del Paso Heights. I don't apologize for being loyal to Del Paso Heights. I'm a graduate of Grant High School. And much love to the Grant High School Pacers. We know how to compete under pressure and get it done under pressure. I'd also like to say that I've been studying the word entrepreneurship tonight. And if you look up To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes, you'll see it's copyrighted by the Davis family, which has been in Sacramento, specifically Del Paso Heights, since 1946. And I'd like to also thank Mr. Chenier for saying that it would be a shame to give back the federal funding to the government instead of distributing it in Sacramento. Why not cut a check loose to To the Bay and Back Cheesecakes? I don't think there's anyone who's guaranteeing anything but us. We guarantee hiring. We guarantee that no cheesecake can be made by a computer. You have to hire people to make a cheesecake. And also cheesecake appeals to both sexes and in most races. And an article came out recently that said baked goods is in a...
Thank you for your comments. Your time is complete. Will you make your final comment, please?
Yes, Mayor Steinberg, please. Organize it where they can cut a check loose to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Lambert. Okay, that is all of the public testimony and I was on the agenda. Are there council ideas or questions? I know I have one that I want to speak about. I'll take my colleagues first. Anybody? All right, if not, let me go forward. A lot of talk in the community and among the people who have been involved in our Climate Commission and in the environmental community about the Slow Streets movement. I know there's been a lot of discussion within the ranks of the staff, both Public Works and beyond, about how we actually get started here. So I'd like to ask a couple of things. There may not be a one-size-fits-all approach and maybe many ways to reach the ultimate goal of 15-minute streets, as they call them, while not having to wait for the ultimate and getting started in a way that I think really excites the community around the concept of slow streets. And I would like to see if we could bring forward, Mr. Chenier, I know I could put something on the agenda, but we work together, to see if we could actually order the materials with, you know, we've got to find the money, $100,000 or so allocation for the signage, the cones, the barriers, the A-frames, and that we ask our Public Works folks to help install at least a couple of these slow streets. Let's work with the Midtown Neighborhood Association. Let's work with Hollywood Park. Let's work with some of the other neighborhoods that have indicated an interest in doing this. And let us get started here. I think it would be real valuable. In addition, if we could maybe get a status report on the overall Climate Commission, a recommendation so that the public, because there are a lot of people really following this and interested in this, know where we're headed and the timelines for implementation of the various components.